Hi everybody, can you hear me? Alright, I just want to make a brief announcement. So, the meeting is scheduled to start at 9 o'clock. The way it works, so we're fair, if you're in line to check in to vote at 9 o'clock, I'm gonna not start till that person's there. There's a pretty long line, as we know. But I just want to let you know, and also want to let you know, if you, you should only have one of two things. You should either have an electronic voting device, let me see, get mine. And if you have one of the voting devices, you should be in the auditorium. Those will not work in the gym. If you're in the gym with a voting device and don't want to sit in the auditorium, unfortunately, you're going to have to get in line when the line shortens and save it for a voting slip. If you have a blue voting slip, which is a blue strip of paper with the town seal on it, those are only going to be used for people sitting in the overflow seating in the gym. You shouldn't have both. You can't vote twice. And if you have a blue slip and you're in the auditorium, you should either trade it in for an electronic voting device or you should move to the gym. And likewise, if you have an electronic voting device and you're in the gym, you should move to the auditorium and trade it in for a voting slip. I'll explain this again at the start, but I just want to let you know, it's not that we're not starting on time, it's that we allow every voter who's arrived at the building at 9 o'clock to check in before we start. So we'll see you in a few minutes. Thank you. Alright, hello again, everyone. Just a little update. I just identified the group of voters who were the last people in line at 9 o'clock. And I've asked them to get my attention when they check in. And at that time, we'll call the meeting into order. Again, I know it means that those of you who got here earlier on time have to sit around a bit, but it's a sense of fairness that anybody who got to the building by 9 o'clock should be allowed. But don't worry, there'll be a little bit of a preamble explaining things once I get started and then we'll move at the pace that the meeting decides to move. So, thanks for being here and I'll keep you posted on how we're going. As people come into the auditorium with electronic voting devices, either, if you, there's still plenty of seats in here, it's just hard to see when you walk in from the back. Worst case, come down toward the front, turn around and look. And then either try to fill in or if those of you have seats between you want to scooch together, if you know people, that's fine. We're trying to get as many people as we can in here as possible because it will make any voting we do be that much faster and more efficient. So thanks for your patience. We're making some progress.
I can look in, but I haven't turned anyone in.
There's still plenty of seats in here, it's just hard to see when you walk in from the back. Worst case, come down toward the front, turn around and look, and then either try to fill in, or if those of you have seats between you want to scooch together if you know people, that's fine. We're trying to get as many people as we can in here as possible, because it will make any voting we do be that much faster and more efficient. So, thanks for your patience, we're making some progress.
Hello. Hello. Oh, I don't... I don't know.
They're at the top of the stairs outside, so hopefully we should be getting started shortly. Once I see them, that they've checked in, I can start the official part of proceedings, and the rest of the people can trickle in. We still do have seats, I know it doesn't seem it when you walk in from the back. If you come in here, A, you should have an electronic voting device. Electronic voting devices won't work in the gym, they'll only work in the auditorium. And if you come in and can't find a seat, I would suggest you walk down front and turn around and look, because it's much easier for me to see the seats. We still have some in the front center part, we still have some in pretty much every section. And we do have enough electronic voting devices for every seat in this room, and we hope to use them all. Thank you. All right, tell you what, as people trickle in, we're almost to the point that I can officially get started. If you have a seat next to you, if you can raise a hand with like a number of fingers of how many seats you have, that'll just help people identify seats. So, we got one down here with two seats. We got some down front with one. There are seats in the upper left as you turn in, so just as you come in. And I do see the group of people who are here at nine o'clock, so I will be... I'll probably be able to get started in less than five minutes, so start gathering yourselves. And then, people who arrived at the school after nine can sort of quietly take seats as they get a chance. Looks like we're getting some stuff moved down here to make room for more people. Okay, we're gonna be able to start in about two minutes. Thank you to my nine o'clock voting contingency for letting me know you're checked in. So, I'm gonna give a couple minutes to settle down. While I'm doing that, I want to remind people, if you are in the gymnasium and have an electronic voting device, you should be moving in here, in the auditorium. And if you don't have an electronic voting device and have one of the blue voting slips, you should move to the auditori... Sorry, to the gymnasium. And, once the line dies down a little, if at any point you're uncomfortable with anything and want to change the way you want to vote and move into the gym, you will have to turn in your electronic voting device, get unchecked in and recheck in at the same time to get a voting slip. But I'm going... We will be starting in about two minutes. Also, I think the room is sufficiently full now that we're gonna be starting to guide all of the overflow voters into the gymnasium. Because there aren't many seats left, and it will speed things along. Okay, please gather yourselves. We have some preamble to do. This meeting was called pursuant to a warrant for nine o'clock. It is now 9:29 on Saturday, December 10th, 2022. I declare the December 10th, 2022 town meeting in session. If you are ready and able, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. I also would like to let you know, because we do have a large crowd here, I've been reminded that to make sure we don't go over capacity, everyone should try to find a seat. So, those of you standing in back, you can either, if you can find a seat, or sit on the ground or something, but we just have to make sure we don't go above the legal capacity of this room. And there are also spaces in the gym if you want to swap your electronic voting device. So, we do have some preamble here, because I know a lot of you are new at town meeting, and I have to explain how all this works. This special town meeting called pursuant to a warrant that was posted and served to me by mail by the selectman, calling for the date, time, and place. As I said, we are here on Saturday, December 10th, 2022. I am John Arnold, your elected moderator from 251 West Main Street. Another essential component of town meeting is your elected town clerk. We have Wendy Nickel to my right for a special town meeting that is neither the annual town meeting nor the October special town meeting. We have a core of 50, we obviously have more than 50 people here. And as I said, we have the warrant, so I'm declaring this meeting in session. We have the select board down to my right, your left, along with the town manager, town council, and other department heads. We have the advisory finance committee, appointed by me, sitting down to my left, your right, and they have a booklet of recommendations that hopefully you have access to. If there are people in the gym who don't have one, perhaps... Okay, we're gonna be able to start in about two minutes. Thank you to my nine o'clock voting contingency for letting me know you're checked in. So I'm gonna give a couple of minutes to settle down. While I'm doing that, I want to remind people, if you are in the gymnasium and have an electronic voting device, you should be moving in here, in the auditorium. And if you don't have an electronic voting device and have one of the blue voting slips, you should move to the auditor-- sorry, to the gymnasium. And once the line dies down a little, if at any point you're uncomfortable with anything and want to change the way you want to vote and move into the gym, you will have to turn in your electronic voting device, get unchecked in and recheck in at the same time to get a voting slip. But I'm going-- We will be starting in about two minutes. So I think the room is sufficiently full now that we're gonna be starting to guide all of the overflow voters into the gymnasium. Because there aren't many seats left, and it will speed things along. Okay. Please gather yourselves. We have some preamble to do. This meeting was called pursuant to a warrant for nine o'clock. It is now 9:29 on Saturday, December 10th, 2022. I declare the December 10th, 2022 town meeting in session. If you are ready and able, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. I also would like to let you know, because we do have a large crowd here, I've been reminded that to make sure we don't go over capacity, everyone should try to find a seat. So those of you standing in back, you can either, if you can find a seat, or sit on the ground or something, but we just have to make sure we don't go above the legal capacity of this room. And there are also spaces in the gym if you want to swap your electronic voting device. So we do have some preamble here, because I know a lot of you are new at town meeting, I have to explain how all this works. This special town meeting called pursuant to a warrant that was posted and served to me by mail by the selectmen, calling for the date, time, and place. As I said, we are here on Saturday, December 10th, 2022. I am John Arnold, your elected moderator from 251 West Main Street. Another essential component of town meeting is your elected town clerk. We have Wendy Nickel to my right. For a special town meeting that is neither the annual town meeting nor the October special town meeting, we have a core of 50. We obviously have more than 50 people here. And as I said, we have the warrant, so I'm declaring this meeting in session. We have the select board down to my right, your left, along with the town manager, town council, and other department heads. We have the advisory finance committee, appointed by me, sitting down to my left, your right, and they have a booklet of recommendations that hopefully you have access to. If there are people in the gym who don't have, who don't have one, perhaps somebody could take a handful of those and take them into the gym and hand them out if they didn't come in here to get one. For those of you who don't know, there was a coffee house in the high school last night, there was a play in the high school last night, there was a lot of commotion around the school between yesterday afternoon and today. And I'd like to thank Steve Mastrorelli, Mark Stockman, the Westboro TV spokes, a very large number of school staff for helping with the setup in very short order. And I'd also like to thank the scouts who are here to help with some roving microphones. Thank you. All right, thank you. But mostly, thank you for being here. It's nice to be back to almost normal. And I'd like to thank each of you for taking time out of your day to participate in town meeting, which, believe it or not, is the town's legislative body. So we are here today acting as citizen legislators, and if you think the process is a little unusual, it's because we are a legislative body and we are directed to act as a legislative body. So thank you for being here, it's greatly appreciated. As you may have noticed, we're using two rooms today, the auditorium and the gymnasium. They're prepared, they are set up to ask for equal participation, and I think the fire chief's trying to get my attention. Give me a second. The people standing up there are blocking fire exits. If you're standing there, can you come down and just find an empty seat? Both sides up here, the fire exits can't be blocked because this is about as full as this room gets. There are empty seats down in the sections in front of you. If you don't see them standing from the back, please come down and-- Yeah, if you have an empty seat, open seat next to you, sorry, I'm right near there. Come down, raise your hands. Chief, could you maybe go help people find seats? Or scouts, could you help find empty seats? All the people up here as well. You have to, you have to find a seat. Thank you. Did I make a mistake? Yeah, it's a long day. So you, all of you standing against the back row, the fire chief has directed me, you have to find a seat. There are a couple of seats here, I see one, I see two. And there's some in the middle, toward the middle here. So perhaps if some of you can help people find the seats, thank you. I know everyone's anxious to get going, and we really can't get going until the fire chief says it's okay, so. While I do my preamble, please find a seat. Thank you. If it's really, if you really need to sit down, you can go get in line and swap your electronic voting device and get a voting slip and go in the gym. That is certainly acceptable. So back to where I was. So the two rooms, the gymnasium and the auditorium, are set up to prepare for equal participation. The gymnasium is for overflow and for people who feel more comfortable being spread out or who don't fit here in the auditorium. There is a masks required section over to the, to the left of, as you look out from the screen, to the left with some signs. If you are more comfortable sitting in an area where everyone around you is wearing a mask, you can sit there. And I will ask Liz Blaze, sorry, Elisa Blaze-Juski, who's going to be the deputy moderator, if you appoint her in a moment to watch that and to do what they say. So anyway, so there will be a mask required section. Similarly, we're asking, these chairs eventually are gonna be used, people, I just want to let you know. Oh, big room, okay, because when the library comes, they're gonna have to, that's gonna be for the library presentation, so anyway. So there are some people here, senior citizens, people with limited mobility, who might not be able to navigate the bleachers. If you're in the gym and feel like you can't navigate the bleachers, I'm gonna ask any able-bodied person be willing to give up their chair in the gym and sit in the bleacher Try to minimize eating and drinking, and just, just remember, it's a packed room in here, just try to keep distractions to a minimum. Our bylaws require that I nominate a deputy moderator who will preside in the event of my absence or disability and also will provide in the gymnasium. It's you, the meeting, that formally elects the deputy moderator, I merely recruit and nominate someone. I've nominated Elisa Blaze-Juski of Two Treetop Park for this post, and she has been briefed and prepared to serve. So here's how we're gonna do. So we don't have to take a counted vote. We are going to do a test vote with the electronic system. But I'm also gonna ask you in electronic voting to raise your hand. I'm going to do a visual count. But I've been asked, because so many of you knew, how do these things work? The one button is to vote yes on an item, the two button is to vote no. If you don't vote, it counts as essentially not voting. And up until I say, and up until the time I say voting is closed, you can change your vote if you accidentally hit the wrong button. So we're gonna do this. So I have nominated Elisa Blaze-Juski to be deputy moderator. We're gonna do a test vote, though I'm not, I'm gonna read out the count, but we're gonna do it by hand, show of hands. So all those in favor of my nomination of Elisa Blaze-Juski here in the auditorium, please press the one button. And if you want to vote no, please press two. If we care of that noise, that would be nice. And also in the gym, if you could raise your, your voting slip if you want to vote yes. If we can figure out what that crackling is in the sound system, it would be nice, their work would be nice. Okay. So now let's go. Voting is started, so please raise your, your voting device and press one if you want to vote in favor and press two if you want to vote again. So we're not gonna do a separate raise of hands, so all right. All right. Was anyone voting no? Let's just, everybody else, anybody voting no? Just like, okay, we have somebody voting no. Okay, that's good. All right, it's a good test of the system. Okay, voting is stopped. Okay, just give us a second. This is our test vote here, and making sure everything's working. We've tested it without the building being filled with people.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Blaze-Juski.
The sound in the gym is very quiet. Could it be turned up, please?
Okay. Yep, okay. So somebody's coming to deal with that. All right, so I will try to speak more loudly. So I saw overwhelming, yes, Ms. Hensley, could you just-- Yes, Ms. Hensley. Yep. Test one, two. The only limit is based on the capacity of the rooms. And people can continue to check in and they can vote once vote comes up, they just can't vote until they're here. As far as I know, there is. Well, I'm sure somebody will tell us if there isn't. The capacity of the other gym is 1,000 people, the capacity in here is 800. We'll continue to try to deal with it. Okay. Can somebody do that? Can somebody go tell them that we, yeah, thank, all right, thank you. All right, so the electronic voting system showed 659 in favor, 52 opposed. Ms. Blaze-Juski, I know you're not deputy moderator yet, but could you just give a report of what the, approximately, was the vote in favor of my nomination out there?
It was a majority.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Since, that's all right.
It was a majority, I don't have a sense.
So since it was a majority in both rooms, I'm going to declare the vote, Ms. Blaze-Juski has been elected your deputy moderator. Ms. Blaze-Juski, will you please rise? Assuming you might, I'll raise my right hand, if you could raise yours. Do you solemnly swear that having been elected deputy moderator, that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of this office? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Blaze-Juski. Ms. Blaze-Juski is now officially deputy moderator. I also want to thank you for your willingness to serve. So the way this is gonna work today, if you agree, voting and deliberations. So the rules relating to town meeting indicate votes are taken of voters who are present and voting. That means that you have to be here to vote, and that also means that we need to make sure we know when you're not here, and we also have to control the cost of the town. So because we're cognizant of the cost that we've been to have electronic voting in both rooms, we have electronic voting here in the auditorium. And to be fair, in terms of saying that since you don't have to raise your hand for the, for the counted votes, to the people in the gym, we're going to do a counted ballot in the gymnasium. So to make this process clear, I'm gonna ask for a vote of the meeting that requires a majority vote. I'm going to move that for the duration of this December 2022, December 2022 special town meeting, when electronic voting is used in the auditorium, the moderator, then when the moderator will divide the meeting, which is technical terms for starting a vote, such the counting will be done by electronic voting in the auditorium, and then voters who cannot be accommodated in the auditorium but are in the gymnasium overflow room will have their votes taken by ballot in the gymnasium. So that's essentially me putting a formal motion to you that when I decide to use electronic voting, then that's how we're gonna do it. We will do electronic voting in here, and we will have a secret ballot counted in the, in the gymnasium. Will all those in favor, please raise their electronic device? Thank you. Also, in both places. All right, will all those opposed? I see none. Can you report on the vote in the gymnasium, please?
We have a majority vote in favor.
Okay, so the majority vote, that is now a rule of the meeting, that is how we will do this. We now have to do with the admission of non-voters requesting to be on the floor. Again, the meeting decides, it requires a majority vote. I've received requests from two people to potentially answer questions related to their work associated with Articles One and Two, the library project. We have John Lemieux from Duxbury, who is the owner's project manager, and we have Eric Moore, an architect. Note that this provides a possible opportunity for them to speak, but doesn't guarantee that they will end up addressing the meeting. Are there any object, all those in favor of allowing these two people to, to answer questions at the meeting, please raise their, their voting device or their voting slip. Thank you. Any opposed? I see some in opposition, but a clear majority. Report from the gymnasium, please.
I need a vote, I'm sorry. Could you please raise your slips if you're in favor of those non-voters being admitted? We have a majority, and I have a request for you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Blaze-Juski. First of all, I'm gonna declare the vote that essentially they are allowed. Yeah.
The vote is a majority in favor.
Okay. What was the request, Ms. Blaze-Juski?
Because of the mushiness of the audio in here, there's a request, if you could speak a little slower.
All right. It's not just the mushiness, I get asked to do that all the time. I will, I will try to slow down. Hey, just a second, I got a question from the clerk. All right, sorry, just more procedural questions, because there's still a line outside. So anyway, if there are other non-voters present who weren't those two people, they should be moving into the gymnasium and sitting toward the back, or standing toward the back, whereas again, we're trying to make as many voters fit in here as possible. And I'll just remind people again, if you're a registered voter, and in here, you should have an electronic voting device and not a blue slip, and if you're in the gymnasium, you should have a blue voting slip and not an electronic device, because the electronic voting won't, won't work in there, and we're gonna be counting voting slips in there when we have to. Now, because of, because of the process we're gonna do for voting, I'm going to have the meeting appoint tellers. The tellers will be the people who will count the votes in the gym, if and when we get around to that. I have, I am nominating Edward Bain of 5 Thomas Rice Drive, Hank Rouch from 5 Ashley Way, Jacob Clapp from 11 Chauncey Circle, Mary Christensen from 2 Overlook Drive, Paul McGrath from 56 Bowman Street, and Louise Eklund from 17 Carolyn Drive. These are six tellers who, upon your, your election of them, I will swear in to faithfully and accurately report the count of any counted ballots in the gym. So I've made the motion to appoint those tellers. Will those in favor of the motion, please raise their electronic voting device likewise in the gym, raise your voting slip? Thank you. All those opposed? There may be a few, I'm not sure. Report from the gym, please.
I see none in opposition.
Okay, I'm gonna declare that a majority vote, though I believe it was actually unanimous. All right. We're getting there. A little about today. So the town meeting is your meeting, and my primary role is to oversee the proceedings fairly and make judgments and rulings in accordance with the rules of town meeting, but most of the decisions are yours. Some key points, because we need this vote to be fair and accurate. If you leave the building, stop by the voter check-in station or a voting official, or a voting official at the exit door, and give them back your electronic voting device or your paper slip. That way we'll know that you've left, and if you choose to come back, you can check in again. If there's something that says you can't come and go, you just can't take the voting slip and the electronic voting device with you. There is babysitting here, thank you to the honor society and the schools and everyone who pulled that together. It's great to be able to offer that. I'm gonna skip, believe it or not, this is the short version, I'm gonna skip some of this, but I will point out that if you ever have a question about procedure at any time, you can call out point of order, and I will recognize you, as I did with Ms. Hensley earlier. Typically, we would wait for you to get a microphone, but in that case, I figured we could just deal with it. There are microphones, there are two standing microphones toward the back, there is, there are some roving microphones by the scouts. When it's time, I will ask if anyone wants to speak on a, on a matter. If he either asks questions, I'll make a speech pro or con, and you can either stand at the microphones or a microphone will be brought to you. However, the person who I recognize is the only person who can speak, and if the, and if the meeting decides to terminate debate before you speak, even if you have a microphone or it's standing in front of you, doesn't guarantee you do get to speak. So I will advise you, if you have a copy of the finance committee booklet, look at the first page for the town meeting a glance. I'm gonna inter, again, voting is for people present and voting. So the people who are outside, who are still in line, as soon as they get checked in, they can vote. And once you leave, you can't vote. So as I said, if you leave the building, or if you turn the voting device in or your voting slip in, if you come back, you can get another one. And I'm gonna ask if anybody sees anyone that they think are voting, voting twice, or have, or have both things bring it to my attention immediately, and we'll see what we can do. Again, in terms of our deliberations, the rules are pretty simple. Town meeting, as I said, is a legislative body, and our deliberations are intentionally a form of structured conversation. This means that I must recognize you in order to speak, and only one person may speak at a time. For voter, voter presenting an article, they make the motion, there are remarks, and then a presentation of around 10 minutes. And likewise, to be fair, I've always allowed a group of citizens who want to speak against a particular position to similarly be able to identify themselves and get a similar 10-minute presentation. I expect we'll see that today. Beyond that, individual remarks are limited to two or two and a half minutes. If you see me using my phone up here, I'm not checking scores, I'm using it as a stopwatch. I have the stopwatch app on my phone, if I can get it to unlock, and I do that, and at two and a half minutes, I may interrupt you and tell you to wrap up. So again, have to be recognized, then you need to give your name and your street address so it can be entered into the record. You're limited to two and a half minutes per speech, and we have a bylaw that says each person may speak only two times on a matter without getting approval of the meeting. And the only exceptions to this is if I direct the question to, if someone can be answered, that doesn't count as one of their two times answering questions is not, it's in terms of giving speeches. Key point, for those of you especially who are new and used to the way things work on TV or at work, interruptions aren't allowed. If you want to address the meeting, you've got to get in line or raise your voting slip and get my attention when your time comes. Similarly, cheering applause, booing, and hissing are not allowed during our deliberations. Voting is your superpower, and the best way for you to express agreement, disagreement, pleasure, or displeasure is to sort of patiently try to speak and persuade people, or to wait until it's time to vote. So let's try to keep our longstanding tradition of keeping it classy, Westboro, and let's see what we can do about that. Also, discussion and deliberation is limited to the topic and motion at hand, and if I find you're making comments that aren't relevant, I may ask you to wrap up. There are other outlets in town, either open forums at various meetings or other avenues, but when a motion is made, the conversation stays on that motion and why people should vote for or against it. So again, if you have any question, you can call out point of order, and I will address it, and we'll do what we can do. And now, final reminder, turn off or mute your cell phones. If you're using a Wi-Fi hotspot of your own, please turn it off and use the town meeting public Wi-Fi. The emergency exits are down, I feel like I'm in an airplane now. Emergency exits are here, here, and in the back, and in the gym, there's multitude of doors. If the fire alarm goes off, I will ask you to safely stand up and try to carefully evacuate the building. If you're near someone who needs assistance, please offer assistance, and then I'm sure the police and fire staff who are here on site will do the best they can. Any procedural questions? All right, I have a procedural comment I want to--
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Blaze-Juski.
We have a procedural question in the gym.
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Blaze-Juski.
Wait, wait, we need, can you turn on, turn on your mic?
Oh, yeah.
Top.
Name and street address, please.
Yes, my name is Pierre Nodano, and my street address is 293 Turnpike Road.
Yes.
And my point of order is, I may be mistaken in this, and if I am, I apologize, but when I came in, I saw only papers that were from the town or from one side of this decision we're going to take. It was an FAQ on the library vote. And so my question, I'd like it to be answered by the person that made this decision, is we're making a yes and no vote. Why are we, why are, are we officially only being given information on one side? That's my question.
All right, that's a sort of a question beyond the normal procedure. My understanding is if people wanted to hand out something else, they could, they could have it printed at their own expense, and it could, and it could be handed out. But my also understanding from looking at the FAQ is it is not a position piece, it is just the library, I believe, reporting on the history of the project. So we can have discussions about whether you agree or disagree when we get under Article One, but when we get there. All right?
That doesn't answer my question, but I accept your answer.
Okay, again, that's a question, you can contact the town hall staff and the library staff after to find out what the process was for having that handed out. All right. I know you want to get started, but I want to, I, I'm going to address a few questions that have been asked of me and I'm sure others in town, that I'm gonna answer them here, not to slow you down, but in hopes that we don't bog down the deliberations with questions about how this town meeting came to be and why we're all here. So I'm gonna do this as quickly as I can. So some have wondered why no reconsideration of articles was done at the October special town meeting. And I want to point out that Westboro has a very strict bylaw for reconsideration. It says in part that reconsideration of any article during the same town meeting, in terms of, in terms of revoting, that couldn't have happened-- in terms of revoting that couldn't have happened, could not have happened unless in the best judgment of the moderator, a significant error or omission occurred in the language or the process of the original action on the article or a significant change of circumstances occurred such that there is a clear likelihood that the outcome could change upon reconsideration or that reconsideration would be in the town's best interest. So as many of you may know, the library articles, one and two, that we see here were articles that were dealt with in the October special town meeting. The vote for the first library article concluded at 10:30. The vote on the second one concluded at approximately 10:35 or so and the meeting actually adjourned at 11:17. However, a change in voters of who's in the room is not a significant change of circumstances. In fact, the reason that bylaw exists is to make sure that reconsideration isn't done strictly based on who's in the room. However, that bylaw has to do with reconsideration at the same town meeting. Once the October special town meeting was dissolved, that town meeting was over. So now, we move on to the fact that today's December 10th, 2022 special town meeting is a new and different meeting. And Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, covers how town meetings can be called. And it reads in part, "The selectmen shall call a special town meeting upon request in writing of 200 registered voters or of 20% of the total number of registered voters of the town, whichever number is lower. Such meetings shall be held not later than 45 days after the receipt of such request and that meeting shall insert in the warrant therefore all subjects, the insertion of which shall be requested by said petition." So, a citizen's petition with Articles 1 and 2 of today's special town meeting was circulated and it was presented and signatures were verified of at least 200 voters. The Select Board was obligated to call a special town meeting with these articles within 45 days of the receipt and because the town meeting was happening anyway, they decided to add Articles 3, 4 and 5, given the meeting was being called. And so here we are with a new special town meeting with five articles for our consideration. Finally, let's get started. Article 1, dealing with public library construction and renovation. Ms. Riss Miller, do I have a motion?
Julia Riss Miller, 12 West Street. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $35,161,877 to fund demolition, landscaping, paving, utility and other site improvement incidental or directly related to such construction, renovation and expansion to fund necessary architectural, engineering or other professional and legal expenses and fees associated with this project, to fund temporary library operational space, storage and moving expenses, to fund furnishings and equipment and to fund the payment of all other costs incidental or related thereto to be expended under the direction of the Library Building Committee that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GLC 4471 or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds of notes or notes of the town therefore. Further, that the town is authorized to apply for and accept any grants or loans available for this project, including the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners grant and the amount of the authorized borrowing for this project shall be reduced by the amount of any grants received for the project prior to the issuance of bonds or notes under this vote.
Thank you, Ms. Riss Miller. Comments?
Hi, Brittany Jacobs, 9 Brookway. Thank you to everyone who has taken the time to be here today. We've been asked to quickly share why we created the citizen's petition for this special town meeting. As you heard, the opportunity for a special town meeting is written into the state laws and applies to any town that has chosen an open town meeting form of government, as Westboro has. As many of you know, there's a deadline of January 9th to accept the $9 million grant from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Therefore, we could not wait until the next annual town meeting in the spring and so we called for this special town meeting. But why did we feel the need to do this? The other reason that we invoked this law is that the circumstances of the last vote did not match the importance of the vote. There's a large amount of money to be decided on and a great potential value for decades to come. This is one of the town's most beloved institutions, which provides services to so many residents, including many who are not allowed to vote today. And frankly, staff and community members have been spending the past 10 years working on this project, including coming to town meeting over and over with updates and votes 11 times. A vote at 10:30 PM on a rainy Monday night, when childcare was not available, did not allow the number of voters who should have been present. Because of these circumstances, many people were excluded from participating. Even so, 498 residents voted on the library project at the October special town meeting. The majority of the votes were in favor of the project. 65.7% of the votes were in favor. It fell short of the 2/3 majority needed by five votes. The turnout at today's special town meeting reflects the importance of the project. We're grateful to all of you for being here. This is the vote that the project and our town deserves.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. At this time, they are going to yield the discussion and we'll have a presentation about the library project itself from the Library Trustees and Building Committee. Yes, what is your point? Give a name and address and what is your point, please? Go ahead. All right. Yes, let me explain the difference. Thank you for raising that. I meant to mention that. The warrant actually contains the boundaries of the topic to be decided. And it is, in the purpose of a warrant, in fact, the word warrant comes from the same root as the word warn. So the town has been warned in the warrant that the project may cost up to a amount that's larger than the amount that Ms. Riss Miller read. However, the rules of town meeting, because the town has been warned of spending that much money, then the moderator is allowed discretion to decide whether that warning is in alignment with asking for less money. And my judgment and the judgment of moderators across the state is that asking for less money usually does, you know, is not, does not necessarily mean people would not have, would have shown up for that. And so if there isn't, if the amount goes up a lot, it's up to my discretion to realize whether that warning is in bounds. But since the motion is for a lesser amount, I'm moving the motion in bounds and the town meeting is going to act on that motion unless it's amended. You have a follow-up question? Okay. Well, yes. So let me explain that. So again, the warrant offers a number of choices. The way town finances work, I don't know where there's a little feedback coming from, but I think they're working on that. So the appropriation essentially says the town is going to allow that much money to be spent. Later on in the motion, there was, I'm trying to find it here. Later on in the motion, there was specifically a motion, the motion included the word, "With the approval of the Select Board, the town is authorized to borrow said amount." So the appropriation says what's the allocation of money that the town can spend? The borrow is that the, I don't think that's me because there's no other microphones up here. It's what? Oh, it's that one. Okay. Yeah, could you turn it off? Yeah. So the appropriation is how much money the town can spend. In this case, the motion says the town is going to borrow that money. So we've reduced the scope from appropriation or borrowing or transferring. And then further on, the motion says that the amount borrowed may be reduced by any grant monies that the town gets. So that's why, that's why the motion is written the way it is and thank you for bringing that up. And now, Ms. Amiot.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning. I'm Maureen Amiot, 6 Arch Street, Library Director.
And I'm Mary Johnston, 5 Sandropon Road, Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. We want to sincerely thank you for taking the time to come to special town meeting today and discuss and vote on the library renovation and expansion project. This is the first of two articles we will be discussing, so please plan to stay for Article 2 as well, as it is crucial to the project. Before we get into details, we wanted to explain the cost information that was read in the motion, which is different from what is printed in the warrant. In October, we presented an estimate of $36.7 million. Subtracting the grant, the cost came to $27.3 million. Reacting to costs in real time, our design team got together to begin value engineering and we were able to decrease the cost by $1.5 million. This resulted in a new cost to the town of $25.8 million. They were able to achieve cost savings by changing some of the materials and details on the exterior of the building.
With that said, the presentation you're about to see is the culmination of a decade of work that started in 2012 with a needs assessment. The report showed that the library was undersized to meet the then-current and future needs and desires of the community. Numerous code and ADA issues were identified that still have not been addressed. Town meeting approved two separate grants for the library to pursue related to this project. The first was a planning and design grant in 2013 from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, or MBLC, the state agency that oversees libraries across the Commonwealth. Using that grant, we studied the current site, investigated alternate sites, held focus groups with the public and ran a public survey. The result was a document called "The Building Program", which describes the library Westboro wants and needs for the current and future population. The high-level design in the downtown location was accepted by town meeting in 2016 along with our request to apply for the MBLC construction grant. In total, between asking to apply for the two grants and coming to give updates on the progress and timeline, we've been before you 11 times since 2012 talking about this project. For those who wonder if libraries are relevant anymore or who think that libraries are a want and not a need, here are some of the statistics from our 2022 fiscal year annual report. Over 7,000 people attended our events. 265,405, that's the number of items, both print and non-print, that were checked out last year. That is our highest circulation ever. In times when people can't afford to buy books, magazines, ebooks or pay for internet, they turn to public libraries to help meet those needs. 12,556 Westboro residents have library cards. And 107,606, that's how many people came through our doors during fiscal year 2022. Our public computers were used 2,236 times and we loaned Wi-Fi hotspots 502 times. The library fills a need for many people in the community, for connection with each other, for technology and books they may not be able to afford or may not want to buy, for quiet space to study or work, to practice English or to learn new skills. It's a cooling center in the summer and a warming center in the winter when weather requires it. The library serves everyone from birth through senior citizens seven days a week.
So why now? Westboro's population has increased 57% since 1980, when the building was last renovated. 57%. As you'll see in a moment, our infrastructure prevents us from meeting the needs of the community has asked for and expects from a 21st century library. We have until January 9th to approve the project or we lose our $9.4 million grant and the funds are given to another municipality to fund their project. Just as the population has increased, the way people use its libraries has changed dramatically. In the 1980s, when the library was last renovated, we didn't have cell phones, internet or Wi-Fi. We had card catalogs and we loaned books. The desires and expectations of our community today are very different. This project is part of the town's strategic plan and has been part of the town's capital plan since the project's inception. Simply put, we just can't provide the services you are asking for in the space we have now.
The current library has some major infrastructure issues that need attention. Two critical ones are our electrical and data systems, but there are many more. The electrical infrastructure is inadequate for a modern library. In staff and public areas, we had to seek help from an electrician to safely link power strips together in order to run all the computers we need. There's no place to easily plug in a cellphone or charge a laptop or tablet and we know how important those tools are for connection and research. Our data infrastructure is also inadequate for a modern library. As you can see here, we don't have a wire closet or a server room. Instead, our data cabling and hardware sits on a bookshelf and runs through a cardboard box into an opening in the wall. The beautiful slate roof on the 1908 building is now 114 years old. Roofs of this type have a lifespan of about 120 years. Tiles are cracked or missing and there are none left to swap out. The pins that hold them to the roof are disintegrating. The windows in the old building are the original single-pane windows that were installed in 1908. They are rotting and need replacement. In addition, we only have two single-user public restrooms for the entire building.
We've been asked, why not just repair what needs fixing? Repairs don't address the building's challenges and programmatic deficiencies that prevent us from effectively providing modern library services. Everything we've learned and heard during our needs assessment and study supported moving forward with a renovation and expansion and not just a base repair. That's why we didn't spend the money on a study and design for a repair project, but instead hired a professional team to help design a project that would meet Westboro's needs for decades to come. Aside from that, piecemeal repair projects historically cost more money and take longer to complete, as we have seen with the projects underway at Hastings Elementary School. Just fixing any one of the critical issues on the repair list would require us to come in full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and bring the entire building fully up to code. The base repairs of this nature are not eligible for grant funding from the MBLC. Although they were hired only to design a grant-eligible project, we asked our architect to estimate the base repair work. The high-level ballpark estimate is about $19 million. If you'd like more information about how these numbers were calculated, please feel free to ask during the question and answers. This renovation and expansion breakdown shows the funding needed to right-size the library, meet ADA and building codes and keep it in its existing location. The total project budget we're requesting today is $35.2 million. The cost to the town after the grant would be $25.8 million. But just like the school projects, we have to approve the full amount of $35.2 million. Base repair is expected to cost $19 million. We would spend that money and end up with exactly the same building we have now that was designed for the 1980s era. The difference in cost between a 1980s-era library and a 21st century modern library is a few million dollars additional. We feel this is a worthwhile and valuable investment in the future of our community. It provides an updated, flexible space that will be able to adapt to future technology while still serving as a gathering place and resource for all sorts of patients' needs. Additionally, the Westboro Public Library Foundation has committed to raising at least $1 million to decrease the cost of the project to taxpayers. The estimated tax impact provided by our town finance director is an average of $245 per year for the average single-family home. It's important to also note that there is other town debt that the town currently has that will be paid off during the term of the borrow for this project. $245 a year comes out to about $4.71 a week. If you look at the repair cost using the same formula, the cost for a $19 million project to the average single-family home would be $180 a year. The library needs repairs regardless of whether they are done through renovation and expansion project or through the base repair. The difference in the two costs to taxpayers is about $65 a year or $1.25 a week. A repair project that would be paid for through borrowing and taxes, just like the renovation and expansion, I'm sorry. A repair project would be paid for through borrowing and taxes, just like the renovation and expansion. For additional investment of $65, we end up with something of lasting value that will stand the test of time.
This short video will give you a 360-degree view of the outside of the proposed new building, then we'll wrap things up. The building will feature a new side entrance on Parkman Street with a ramp and stairs leading to the door. A covered porch will allow for outdoor seating and programs. A covered porch will allow for outdoor seating and programs. Fencing and benches will be part of the front yard, and the green space will be maintained. The new plans would increase the meeting rooms' capacity from 40 to 65 and move it to the main floor. It will have access to the covered porch to allow for outdoor events. Additionally, the plans also include small study rooms for tutoring, quiet study, and Zoom calls. The new children's department on the top floor will be a lighter, brighter space that features interactive technology, an early literacy area, and space for storytimes and events. A new, larger space for teenagers will be located on the lower level, near the books and materials for adults. Teens are located right now across from the quiet reading room in the existing library in a space that can only hold about 10 people. The new building will give them more room, a better location, and a welcoming environment. To wrap things up, saying no to this project and walking away from the grant funds would mean that our $9.4 million would be awarded to another community to fund their library project. We would have to do repair work to keep the library functioning. We'll be letting millions of dollars walk out the door, and we'll be constrained to trying to provide the modern library services the community wants and deserves in a building that was designed for the 1980s. A yes vote means the taxpayers realize a cost savings of 25% on this project. We preserve our historic library, the heartbeat of our downtown, and we get a library that meets our needs now and for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I did see a couple of people walk in with voting slips. If you have a voting slip in your hand, you should be in the gymnasium. That's where we're going to count the slips, just want to make sure. It's okay, we're just coming to see what it looks like, that's fine, so I know that. Okay, that ran over 10 minutes a little bit, so I will extend the time. We have an opposition presentation, I believe, by Mr. Boudelary and some people. If he wants to come up and do his presentation, we will do that, and then we'll quickly get started. And again, names and street addresses when you get settled. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Crowley, 12 Wheeler Road.
Steve Boudelary, 9 Thomas Newton Drive.
Mr. Crowley and Mr. -- sorry, and Mr. Boudelary, you have the floor.
First, I'd like to say a few words about the process that allowed this revote. Even though there is a mass law that technically allows a special town meeting to be called by collecting 200 signatures, does that mean it is the right thing to do under any circumstances? Hardly. Having a special town meeting for the purpose of overturning a recently decided article and an official town meeting undermines confidence in our town meeting form of government and discourages participation in regularly scheduled town meetings. That being said, I want to thank all who have worked on the library project for over 10 years, and their hard work and dedication are very much appreciated and should not go unnoticed. However, the library expansion project was voted down at the October 17th town meeting, even though it had been brought before implicitly or explicitly supported at several past town meetings. Why is that? The most obvious reason is that the cost of the project was originally $24 million with a $9 million state grant, reducing the cost to taxpayers to $14.6 million. However, when the cost was reevaluated and announced this past September, it had inflated to $37 million. That's a 54% increase in the project and an 87% increase in the cost to the taxpayers. Such a significant increase in the cost of the project is the primary reason it was supported before but voted down at the October 17th town meeting. So now we'll start with the presentation. There are other concerns about a project that expands this library besides the escalated cost, namely that it is too big, too expensive with the increase in cost, and that there is not adequate parking. This is the half-acre lot that the library sits on. West Main Street is on the left. Red outline is the property. The blue outline is current library to be demolished, and the gray box is the proposed addition. Some of the concerns with the expansion project are: the new addition is within five feet of the property line. There is a limited access for construction also, and where will the construction vehicles be stored? Possibly the parking lot at the congregational church next door, but the members of that church won't even be voting whether to allow that until January at the earliest. We're going to lose green space in the -- also in the front of the building. It pushes the boundaries of the property and creates safety concerns for activities around and near the library. This shows graphically that the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, or MBLC, says that the average library in Massachusetts is approximately 1 gross square foot per population served, and the current Westboro library meets that ratio. It also shows that the proposed library is significantly larger than average.
I want to highlight the full cost of the library project. There are a lot of numbers floating around. At the moment, the estimated cost of the construction is $35.2 million. There's a state grant offsetting that by $9.4 million. The borrowing costs for construction range from $11.5 million at an interest rate of 4.5% and $17.2 at 6%. The total cost of the library is somewhere between $46.7 million and $52.4 million, assuming the interest rates aren't higher and assuming there are no cost overruns. The cost to taxpayer will be between $37.3 million and $43 million. We are in a time of deep economic uncertainty. Inflation is driving people's expenses way up. Westboro's taxes have been growing dramatically over the years. This project is way out of proportion to what the average family can afford. Early in the month, the Select Board and the Advisory Committee held meetings. I was struck by a recurring comment from several members: "Westboro has a spending problem." Based on the warrants approved in 2022, Westboro taxes in 2023 are expected to increase 7.31 or 8% for the average home, after going up 8% this year without the library bill. Long-term borrowing for the $55 million failed school is still not factored into our tax bills. The impact of inflation and cost increases could significantly increase ongoing costs next year. We have already been informed the school budget will be significantly increased in the impact in FY '24. When we evaluate investing in the library, we need to think of the context of all the other spending, and we need to consider lower-cost options for future projects.
As we see here, this is the most expensive library per square foot that the MBLC funded. It's $1,216 per square foot, almost double the next highest, Noel, at $696 per square foot, and more than double most of the rest of the other towns. Why does our library cost so much compared to other towns? There are a number of factors. This picture provides a visualization of what will need to be done. The top part would represent the back part of the library. The left side would represent where the parking lot for the congregational church is. We're tearing down 15,000 square feet, all of the 1980s addition and the rear part of the historic 1908 building, to build a 25,000-square-foot building. That costs $440,000. We're excavating the lower basement into ledge. That costs $665,000. The excavation is primarily to get a higher ceiling in the rooms in the basement. This is expected to be achieved by jackhammering the ledge that is adjacent to the 1908 building and risk damage the 1908 Library Foundation and the Congregational Church Foundation next door, which is made of stone. Temporary earth-retaining walls will also need to be built adjacent to the property line at a cost of $450,000. The foundation will be temporarily underpinned at a cost of $168,000. And since the proposed building would be close to the power lines on Parkman Street, there may or may not be a cost to relocate or put them underground at a cost that has not yet been included in the project. There are also concerns about adequate parking if the library expansion project is done. There are a number of references that show this concern from multiple resources. This slide shows a quote from a report by a library consultant that was hired to review the library facility and make recommendations. Unfortunately, the existing site and a lack of adequate parking is a huge limitation for WPL reaching its full potential to best serve the residents of Westboro. Even if WPL's business and services are increased, the community will not be able to adequately access them. As you can see here, there are only 148 spaces within a 350-foot radius of the library, including the church parking lot and the police building. This is the error. Library patrons will be sharing the available 148 spaces with employees and patrons of the Town Hall, Forbes Building, and downtown businesses. Yet the previous report's guidelines show that 100 to 150 parking spaces are needed for the size of the proposed library expansion alone. To compare the resulting parking from other towns' recent library projects, we can see how much dedicated library parking there is in Grafton and Shrewsbury's libraries, which are both on multiple acres of the land. In comparison, the Westboro library, which is 0.45 acres, has no dedicated parking, and what parking there is, again, will need to be shared with employees and patrons of the Town Hall, Forbes Building, and downtown businesses. This slide shows a quote from an MBLC member who evaluated Westboro's library proposal. She says, "The Westboro application was ranked lower primarily because of the design. There was a lot of discussion about whether the current site was large enough to construct a building that would truly meet the needs of the community, the lack of parking, and the decision to relegate larger programs to the meeting room across the street." The MBLC and library consultants hired by the town, in other words, the experts, are saying, "Even if you want a library of the proposed size, you need to put it somewhere else. If you want to keep the library in the same location, it needs to be the same size. You can't have it both ways." What are our options if the library expansion is not approved today? Here are several options. First option A: base repairs and small capital projects to complete critical items. Example of critical item would be the roof. The roof simply needs to be repaired as per the AM Fogarty estimate, which was created in 2022, for $125,700, because it was evaluated by Perkins &amp; Will to have a 150- to 200-year lifespan roof with 50 to 100 years of lifespan left. So the roof, Perkins &amp; Will said, was in good shape, both 1908 version of the roof and the 1980 version of the roof, and only needs to be repaired and is only planned to be repaired in the current project. Okay, so base repairs are one option, would cost much less than $19 million. Option two is a complete renovation to reconfigure existing 20,000-square-foot library. An updated building evaluation would need to be done. The last one was done in 2012, and a code analysis would be required to actually get an accurate estimate. So we don't know what that would cost. Option C is to build a new 30,000-square-foot library at a new site with adequate parking. This would allow for us to apply for a 30% to 40% grant at the 2023 grant round, so there's another grant round coming up. In short, demolishing most of the current library and jackhammering into ledge in such close quarters is an invasive process that risks damaging the surrounding buildings. Rebuilding a much larger building will push the boundaries of the property, and all of this will cost the taxpayers an estimated $37 million to $43 million. That's what the library expansion project offers. A repair option would be much less invasive, much less expensive, and will give the library a much-needed update that doesn't necessarily need to cost $19 million. Building a new library in a different location would allow us to apply for a grant in the 2023 grant round, resulting in a more economical cost. We would appreciate a no vote on this project, so we can come up with a better, more cost-effective solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boudelary and Mr. Crowley. As you'll notice, if you have access to the Advisory Finance Committee, they voted a recommendation to defeat this article 5 to 3. Any additional comments by the Advisory Finance Committee? Mr. Beretti?
We have no additional comments right now, but we'll be happy to respond to questions, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Beretti. You will also note that the Select Board voted to approve this article 3 to 2. Does the Select Board want to make any comments at this time? Mr. Johnson?
Ian Johnson, 9 Berdus Adams Way. Like the Advisory Finance Committee, we have no further comments at this time, but welcome questions, and we'll answer them as appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, the floor is yours now. I know it's been a while. I thank you for your patience, I thank for listening. I see Ms. Hensley riding Scout. Could you bring a microphone down front here? One of the scouts in the middle section down toward the front. Point where I'm pointing. Also, if anyone wants to -- because we've got a pretty big crowd, don't get too many people by the standing microphones. No, up here, right there, like about three or four rows back. Could you hand the microphone back to Ms. -- no, you can hand it in from the front if you'd like. There we go. Ms. Hensley, name and address, please. Now we have to play, figure out how to turn on the microphone.
Thank you, Scout. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jody Hensley, 39 Arch Street here in Westboro. I know this is a big project, it's a complicated project, and it's an important project. I was very surprised and actually encouraged to see so many people out participating in their form of direct democracy here this morning. The library, in my opinion, is a 40-year project, so this decision is multi-generational in its scope. And after 40 years, it's time to invest in this community asset for the next 40 years. Westboro has a track record of taking good care of its assets, and it makes this a very desirable community. A town library is a bedrock asset for a town, and it serves everyone. The state of town library says a lot about the state of a community and what it values. 10 years of design planning will bring us a right-sized, appropriately-programmed facility. Ten years of design planning will bring us a right-sized, appropriately programmed facility designed to meet present and future needs. A state grant of $9 million should not be rejected, but state funds do bring an obligation to program a library appropriately to the population of the town. Efficiencies have already been approved with this library. The state-required 100-person library meeting space has been reduced since we already have space in the Great Hall right across the street to serve that purpose. People working on this project have already been looking for efficiencies. A construction management at-risk method is being used. That's going to be an insurance project, an insurance method against any kind of spiraling costs. This method has delivered recent projects in town on time and under budget. The $37 or $35 million cost today will be $100 million in value when a 40-year inflation calculation with an average of 2.5% inflation is applied. We will look back in 2063, or the next generation will, and wonder how we got this library built for the costs that we built it. I'd also, just as a side note, want to say the numbers I just saw in this. Previous presentations were comparing 2017 library costs with now a 2023 library costs. So those inflation calculations have to be factored in. I don't believe that holding out for the cost of repairs will be cost-efficient. We'll be on our own without a state grant to fix a building that was built in 1908 and 1980. We could well end up spending more money over time to repair a library that was designed for 12,000 residents in 1980 than we will for this appropriately scaled building for over 21,000 residents today. This is an important cornerstone project, and with a state grant defraying a quarter of its cost, I think it's a prudent fiscal decision to invest now rather than to pay more later. I believe that the financing of this project is well within the Select Board's fiscal policy for the percentage of budget to devote to debt service to support this community's favorable AAA bond rating, and that our tax bills are average for neighboring and similar benchmark towns. But I would like to fact-check that. So, Mr. Moderator, can I ask the Select Board or the Town Manager to confirm the fiscal policy and our tax bill comparisons?
Thank you, Ms. Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have two slides related to this question. So the first slide here, the Select Board has a comprehensive fiscal management policies. It's reviewed regularly, and it's what we follow as we look towards debt and other financial policies going forward. Related to debt, our debt guidelines, which are calculated per the policy using percentage of general fund debt compared to the general fund budget. We have a maximum debt ceiling per our goals of 10%, and then we have a goal to stay within the 7% and a debt floor of 2%. So this is general fund debt, so it doesn't include water and sewer projects. So this slide here shows how the debt is estimated to look going forward, with slides showing if the library project were approved as well as if it were not approved. So the green is showing the town's debt without the library as it's estimated through FY 2028, and then the blue is the debt with the library estimated through FY 2028. The lines at the top show where we would fall on that percentage. So right now, our ceiling per best practices is at 10%. We have a goal of 7%. So you can see that in fiscal '23, we're at 6.6%. In fiscal '24, we're estimated to be at 6.9%. Fiscal '25 is when we would expect our first borrow related to the library project. And so you can see that orange line is with the library project having been approved, and that gray line is if it's not approved. So we would come up in FY 2027 to that 9%, which is getting closer to that 10%, but then we would start to drop down, understanding that as the budget grows, the percentage changes because it's a calculation. The percentage is based on the total general fund budget.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is that it? All right, just to remind people, so we have the roving microphone, we have two microphones here, we also have an audience microphone in the gym. I'm going to sort of cycle around. Ms. Hensley? Ms. Hensley is saying her question also asked about comparable tax rates. We'll see if Ms. Williams has a slide for that.
Sorry about that. So this slide here shows the debt service as a percentage of total FY 2021 budgets. This is pulled off of the DOR's website, the Department of Revenue website. It's inclusive of total town debt and enterprise funds, so unlike the slides I was showing you before, which don't include water and sewer, these do include water and sewer. And so it's important to know, I understand we're looking at fiscal 2021, that's where the state data is at. You can see Westboro is in green there at the 11.89%. It's important to understand that towns are on all sorts of different situations related to your borrowing, so we have neighbors, people on these slides that have regional school districts, so that might not be, so school projects might not be included in these percentages. In Westboro, we take on all of the debt for the wastewater treatment plant, as an example, though we have other partner towns that pay for those fees. So this is just an example of across the state. And then here, I think to Ms. Hensley's question, is just our average single-family tax bill related to our comparison communities, our data dashboard communities. This is a slide we show at every town meeting. Towns are setting their tax rate right now for fiscal '23, which is the year we're currently in. So this is fiscal '22, where we're able to compare, and so you can see that Westboro is in the middle there.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So as I said, we have two standing microphones here. We have a roving microphone, we have a microphone in the gym, so I'm going to cycle through. I saw this woman first, so name, street address, and I think, see if the microphone's on.
Hello? Yes, hi. Hi, good morning. Jill Forbes, 10 Spring Road. I want to start out by thanking Maureen and Mary and everyone who's been involved in the 10 years' worth of research, planning, and effort to bring this critical resource to our town. Our family is very grateful for all of your hard work and efforts. I wanted to ask, in the last town meeting in October, there was discussion of potential ARPA funds becoming available as a potential supplement to funding the project, and so I just wanted to see if there was an update on the status of that.
Thank you. Question about the update of the ARPA funds, Ms. Amyot.
Sure, I can give you an update on that. As we know, we've all voted in a new state legislature, and the current state legislators decided not to encumber any expenditures with that existing ARPA funding and let the new legislature use it to fund whatever their priorities are. So there won't be any action on that, at least this calendar year. Hopefully, after the new legislature is sworn in, we can do another push, and we intend to, to ask for the money, the same money that we were asking for two months ago, we'll still be asking for again.
Thank you. Was there a follow-up question? Yeah, thank you. I said the mic's off, hang on.
Could you remind everyone just the amount of what that potential ARPA funding might be?
Sure. So the total ask for all of the 12 communities involved was $87 million. Westboro's share that we were requesting was $13 million, which would cover the escalation costs from the 2016 cost estimate to the 2022 cost estimate.
Thank you. Gentleman over here at this microphone, name and street address, please.
Thank you. Name was Roger Shrengin, Jacob Jones Way.
Is that the microphone, actually? Yes, Jack, I think you have a nice projected voice, but I don't think Jim could hear.
Name was Roger Shrengin, two Jacob Jones Way.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming in Saturday morning. Great participation, great to see everybody. I was internalizing a few numbers that were shown, just wanted to kind of walk through that, just so that I can make sure I'm understanding this. So about 107,000 annual visitors to the library, population of about 22,000 in Westboro. That is five visits per year for an average citizen. I would claim that's not a values facility. The other number I saw was $110 per person per year. That's the tax rate. $110 per person per year. Let's do the math, right? Five visits, $110. That's approximately $20 to $25 per visit to the library. That's the cost we are talking about over here. I am a library patron. I come here probably 40, 50 times a year, I come to the library, right? So I'm getting a great deal out of this, but I'm kind of looking at the average citizen. Is this a good use of our funds? So, you know, Steve has shared some great ideas, right, in terms of alternatives, things that we can do to reduce his costs. So I'm all for the library, I think it's a great thing, but I'm hoping that we vote no today and come back with a more affordable plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm now going to swap to the gym, Ms. Blazewski. Is there anyone in the gym who wishes to speak?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we have four people in line.
Okay, let's recognize the first person. Name and street address, please.
Jim Ball, 78 Lyman Street. Here to speak is co-chair of the Library Foundation. I just wanted to reiterate Maureen's comments that the foundation, in the event of ES vote, is thoroughly committed to raising private capital. We have that million-dollar goal, we would not stop if we achieve that, and so I just wanted to be sure everyone understood that we are fully committed to raising and working hard to raise that capital. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I go to the microphone over here, just so we can pre-stage the microphone, is there anyone who doesn't want to go to the standing microphone who wants to have a, who wants to speak? It's preferred if we don't. All right, we'll go with, I don't see anyone to pre-stage a microphone. We'll go to the woman at the microphone, back to your right, my left. Name and street address, please.
Zin Church, 1 Essex Way. I am a member of the Congregational Church here in town. I've had ample opportunity to be active at the church and attend functions at the library. I would ask you all to please consider the fact that the church is over three, we're planning our 300th anniversary. It's an old building, and it is a very special place to so many other people. Please keep this in mind. You're taking more of our land, I learned at the planning board the other evening, and now to see the kind of construction that's going to go on and putting construction equipment in the library for the library to use our parking lot, I think is just very inconsiderate. We are the 100th town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because the Congregational Church established the first meeting house, which was required, and that is how we have become the 100th town. So please, people, I ask you to consider the manifestations of going forward with this project. As you leave the Rotary and you come up to West Main Street, there's an ambiance of architecture. It's visible on both sides of the street. This addition to the library is like Star Wars 2024 being plopped in that facility. That's all I have to say.
No, no, we don't allow that. Everyone can speak their mind. As I said at the beginning, your vote is your superpower. Please, please, no applause. Thank you. All right, Ms. Amyot, I know the parking was brought up. Do you want to just quickly address the parking issues? Is that where you're standing? Are you waiting to receive this question? Okay, all right, that's fine. We'll go to the gentleman at the microphone back here.
My name is Jim Crowley. I live at 11 Thomas Newton Drive in Westboro. I've been a resident for 43 years in town. I'm here to represent those people in the community. This is an affluent community, and I'm here to represent the people in the community that can't afford this. There's 4,000 residents in our town that are either elderly or in poverty-stricken, and if you go to any of the churches here in town, if you leave here and go down to the right toward town, and you go to any of the churches, we're servicing more of our residents in need for food and clothing than ever before. The cost of goods these days, as we all know, for groceries and gas and electric bills and gas bills, the heater homes are going to go up 30%, 35%. These are the people that I worry about. I was at a town meeting, the last town meeting I was at, a gentleman stood exactly where I am. He was an elderly gentleman. He said, "I've been in town for all my life. If there's any more cost increases, I have to leave the town." That's a sad thing. It shouldn't be. I watched the presentations, I saw the people say, "Well, we need a new bathroom, we need a roof and new spacing," which I also heard was adequate based on some studies, "and there aren't places to plug in your laptops and cell phones." Well, that's an awful lot of money for $37 million. I also heard that to fix the roof would be $124,000. And the other thing that I want to note is that when they said, "Well, the cost to repair rather than replace is 19-something million dollars," I don't see anything to back that up to use as a comparison to getting a new library. So, you know, if we're doing this for, and these are the people that are pro, and we're doing this for new bathrooms, for plugging our cell phones and to get us a room for our servers, really? Honestly, think about the people in this town. They're, you know, as I said, this is an affluent town. The people can afford it, it doesn't matter. There's a difference between need and wants and needs. These people are trying to put food on their table, and this is a big deal for them. They are not here because it's tough for them to be here. The other people, they're not here to vote because they're working right now. I'm not working, I don't, you know, but there are people in this town that have to work that can't be voting to not have this increase in taxes. So I'd like everyone to consider those people. This is a holiday season, and it's a time to consider other people. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Amyot, I know during your presentation, you said if there are questions about the repair budget that could come up, the gentleman asked, "Would you like a few minutes to discuss the estimate for the repair versus the grant?"
I'd like to have John Lemieux, our owner's project manager, address some of those numbers.
Okay, all right. Since, again, since it was brought up, Ms. Amyot, during her presentation, said if people wanted to hear more about how the estimate for the repair came up, and so we'll defer to it. I know you're not a voter, if you could just, your name and your affiliation, please.
Not a voter. John Lemieux, the Vertex Companies.
And please try to keep your remarks brief. Thank you.
We're the owner's project manager for the project. Just to speak a bit about the $19 million number that's been around, obviously, by the time we were brought into the project, as Maureen had said, the application had been sent to the MBLC. So where does that number come from? Back in 2016, when the report was being put together that was part of the grant package, there was pricing that had been put together, and Eric's firm, LPA, had used Shrewsbury as a background for it. So basically, what they did is they took the estimated construction costs from the Shrewsbury project for the new addition, as well as for the renovation of the existing building, a very similar project from that standpoint, took those numbers, added to it, you know, an estimate for site work, for selective demolition, for hazmat and abatement, and then added the contingencies to it and general conditions and all of that, and came up with a number that at the time was about $386 a square foot. What we did to get to that $19 million is took that number and escalated it through the years, 17, 18, 19, 20, to the midpoint of construction in 2024. So when people say, "We haven't seen a lot of backup," it's correct, because that was not really the focus of this group. This group's focus was the grant that was submitted to the MBLC. Obviously, if that wanted to be studied, it would take a good amount of work to get it to a point, but we needed to have a number to be able to share with all of you. Obviously, that number would need engineering, would need a review of code, you know, we talk about pieces of the work, we talk about roof, we talk about windows. At certain points, there are triggers that the code requires depending on the assessed value of your building. Typically, if you exceed 30% of that assessed value, and municipalities are notorious for estimating the value of their buildings low, so it's easy to break those thresholds. At that point, the building has to be made fully ADA compliant, needs to be made fully life safety requirement, sprinklers, those kind of things, which might not be there. There's also sometimes requirements for structural work, things that are behind walls and in ceilings that you can't see, that you have to open and get in there and do that. So again, when we put that number together, it's using our combined knowledge of what we've seen typically happen, but if someone said to me right now, "Do you..." But if someone said to me right now, do you absolutely need to change the, you know, structure at the existing library to bring it up to code? If we trip that, that would have to be studied, but we're, but our experience tells us, yes, we would have to do that. So that's, that's where that nineteen came from.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to the next voter in the gymnasium. Ms. Blazewski, could you ask that voter for their name and address and to make their remarks, please?
Okay, thank you. My name is Raj Chala, live on five Jack Strapath. My question is two-part question. First question, I wanted to understand the repair project. How long will it get us? When are we going to be back here again? So is it like ten years, twenty years, thirty years kind of timeframe? That's the question number one. Question number two is about financing the project. Are we financing the project? Why are we voting it on in isolation? Why are we not prioritizing? Why are we not looking at other capital projects and prioritizing against them? And it might give us a, it may or may not, uh, give us a better idea of where we are going to spend, unless we want to pay for it. So that's my question, want to understand more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have two questions. I don't know if, who's best suited to answer them. There was a question about how long would it be until we got an estimate for a repair project that I, how long to come back to town meeting? I don't know if anyone's capable to give a rough estimate for that? How long would a repair project, okay, the full duration? Okay. So how long would it, thank you, Mr. Johnson. So does anyone who wants to venture a guess at how long a repair project would take? Good. Hang on. How long, oh, how, oh, is it how long it lasts? Okay, how long would it last? Thank you. We'll let the owner's project manager make some remarks on that one.
So again, John Lemieux from Vertex, and I may lean on Eric, the architect, a little bit here. The question, it's, it's a bit of a circular question. How much of a repair are you going to do? You know, obviously, right now, the repair that's considered as, in the nineteen million is if you, if you were just going to repair everything in the building that's there as it stands, you know, doing all of that, yeah, you would increase the life of this building, but it doesn't, you know, doesn't increase the programmatic usage of the building. That's the thing, that's the piece with the MBLC chimes in on and says, hey, you need more square footage. I mean, if you were to do the nineteen million dollars worth of work, you know, it would extend the life of the building. How long? I mean, of course, the roof, another twenty, thirty years, but what's the scope? So that becomes, it's, that's not what was studied. We can speak very in-depth about the project that's in front of you, but we can't, we can only give you generalizations about, about that repair project.
Thank you very much. The next question was something about financing prioritizing. Does anyone want to summarize how the town does the capital expense planning or how this came through to there? Or is that, I think the question was basically just how does this project get prioritized versus other ones? Anyone want to make some remarks about that? Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Um, the, the library project has been on, uh, the horizon for several years, as they've spoken about previously. And when we were looking at doing the, uh, the larger building projects, so the Forbes Building, the fire station, Town Hall, um, it was, you know, sequential in the slides as we, as we move forward. And fails also, it was inclusive of that. As we look at, uh, future building projects, um, you know, we're, we're considering the community center and the possible satellite fire station, and as we work through, um, our debt strategy and our policies, um, we're figuring out where those go. There's also smaller borrowing, um, that might happen for, uh, additional roof projects and things like that to maintain our current infrastructure, and all of that goes through our capital planning process. We have a capital expenditure planning committee. They meet this time of year. It's made up of residents, uh, who sit on, uh, existing committees and also residents who just sit on this committee, and they make recommendations about how we prioritize all of these projects and move them forward.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I'll go to the, anyone sitting who is unable to go to one of the standing microphones who wants to speak? Don't see anyone? Okay, we'll go to the microphone back here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Suzanne Arpante, forty-four O'Neal Drive. This may be a rhetorical question, but why was the library project not reevaluated after two, after the two thousand and eighteen strategic plan final report was issued? The voters of the spring two thousand and eighteen town meeting approved the community-wide strategic planning process, which cost seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars, which was two hundred less than the seventy-five we voted to transfer from free cash, and the vote on that was a hundred to fourteen. The planning process including, included the select board, the department heads, the advisory boards, and commissioners, employees, and residents. It's a hundred and ten-page final report, which is available on the town website, contains two pages of proposed initiatives and priorities grouped as top, high, and other. The projects that would likely require capital expenditures and long-term borrowing are number three, a satellite public safety facility, which is a top priority according to the list. The funds, I understand, are currently being set aside by some of the new projects coming into town. Number nine, an intergenerational community center, um, is a high priority. We also voted fifty thousand dollars for that study, um, at the last town meeting, for a senior study. That was another fifty thousand dollars. Number eighteen is support the construction of a new, new library, and that is listed as an other priority. Each item in this, of these, in this list is sus, assigned a project leader. Number three was the, um, satellite public safety is assigned to the fire and police chief. Number nine, the intergenerational community center is assigned to the recreation director, and number eighteen is assigned to the library director. Now, there are closing comments by the select board members and the town manager, um, in this report, and you can, you can access this online. Shelby's not here today, but I found her comments to be compelling. Says about the report, this isn't something that should just sit on a shelf. It is, it is incumbent on all of us to refer each other back to it, to check each other, and to communicate out to the community. Why would we approve an excessively expensive library renovation when we have higher priority projects? I would encourage you to look at this report. The feedback from, from many of the members, and you can read everyone's comments, um, things that come up the most are traffic and taxes. So I, um, appreciate maybe a response from, from the selectmen on that question.
Thank you, Ms. Arpante. I guess the question is directed to select board, or would you like the library to answer it? Hang on. Ms. Williams?
Um, I would just, uh, direct everyone to the, the budget document. Every year in our, uh, budget document, we have a whole section where we know progress on all of the items in the strategic plan, and I think that we're actually really proud to say that we've made a lot of progress on all the items. The, the library was listed as a priority, as was some other ones that we're working towards. You noted the senior needs assessment as an example, trying to understand the multi-generational center and what that might look like. The library, um, you know, presents an opportunity with this grant, and the timing of that grant is something that we can't, you know, that we don't control, and, and we've known that it was coming, and so we have that opportunity before us.
Thank you. Mr. Conklin, go to this microphone.
Boyd Conklin, Eight Water Street. Can we have, uh, some more specifics on the other options, uh, not the nineteen and twenty-five million, thirty, thirty-six million from, uh, Mr. Budagary's side?
Let's see, well, I, I think the question has been asked about how they got the nineteen million. And in terms of the other options, the purpose of this town meeting, if anybody has information and wants to answer that, but I believe right now, the question before us is to go ahead with this particular proposal. And I'll, does anyone want to address the other options? Mr. Budagary, you just want to fill in a little bit? Again, briefly, because again, our, our decision today is, is yes or no on this particular option, and I know voters want to consider what their choices are, but we only have so much detail. Try to provide new information, Mr. Budagary, and try to be as brief as you can. Thank you.
So with, uh, limited time before, uh, this town meeting was, uh, was, um, adjourned, not adjourned, uh, but created, tried to pull together some costs, uh, that were in the literature that, um, had been evaluated as part of the library, uh, evaluation process. So, uh, we came up with some less expensive options. And we'll start with, uh, the roof. The roof, as you can see here, uh, Perkins and Will indicated that, oh.
It looks like you have a lot of slides, Mr. Budagary. Try to just focus and move along as quickly as you can.
Extremely rare material that lasts a hundred and fifty to two hundred years, and their evaluation was that it would last another fifty to a hundred years. In the A.M. Fogarty schematic estimate of twenty-twenty-two, that's this year, um, the roof repair estimate is a hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars, and that's what would be spent on the roof repairs, um, if, uh, as part of the library expansion project. We could do that as a separate line item and a list of necessary repairs. This came from twenty-nineteen, so there's a little bit of inflationary, um, inflation that needs to be taken account, but, um, uh, for, let's call it even minimal ADA improvements to bring it up to middle, minimal, um, ADA requirements, it costs two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That could be a part of a, a, a line item in a list of repairs. The, these items were, uh, voted on by town meeting, and, um, and because of the plan to do this library expansion project, they would defer it, but the amounts were, um, for, uh, uh, the HVAC system, thirteen thousand dollars was, was, uh, given back to the town, but those HVACs, uh, system, uh, repairs were actually made, so, so we would be, uh, losing that if, uh, if, if, if we did the expansion project and tore down the nineteen-eighty, uh, addition. So for carpet and lower level was thirty-seven, thirty-three, seven. The library windows and restrooms were a hundred and thirty-nine, um, thousand dollars, almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, you know, the, also the window replacement estimate, um, that's in the, in the current plan, expansion plan, um, is a hundred and forty-seven, eight fifty, uh, and that's, again, a twenty-twenty-two, uh, number. So, so these could also be line items in a list of repairs that need to be done. So, uh, this, this just, uh, having gone through some of the documents, um, that are online and pulling out the, um, uh, some line items that would be part of a basic, a base repair, uh, project, um, these are the costs that we, that are already estimated. Some may need to have some, uh, adjustment for inflation, but first to the window replacement, a hundred and forty-seven, eight fifty, roof repair, a hundred and twenty-five, seven. Those come from a twenty-twenty-two estimate. Bathroom upgrade, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Lecter power infrastructure, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That also comes from the, uh, the twenty-twenty-two estimate and is part of the project. ADA upgrade, uh, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, and add twenty percent in, in soft costs, um, for a total of a, a, a little over a million dollars. Add a hundred percent contingency and inflation is, you, you, you can get all these things done for a little over two million dollars. So some other line items that, uh, repairs that may need to be done, um, are elegant data upgrade, data infrastructure, uh, sprinkler and corresponding, uh, soft costs. Unfortunately, we didn't have, uh, we couldn't find numbers, uh, that were already estimated online, uh, although I did, uh, last night find numbers for data infrastructure, uh, that were four dollars a square foot. If you multiply that times twenty thousand square foot building, that's only eighty thousand dollars. That's another line item. You know, all this stuff adds up to, uh, two, three million dollars, uh, to, to do these repairs instead of, um, uh, nineteen million dollars that are estimated. And we don't need to do every single thing that's on a list of repairs, just the ones that are necessary, um, uh, to, uh, keep the buildings in good shape. So.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Budagary. Can you wrap it up, please?
Sure.
Okay.
And this is from, this is the last slide, anyway. This, uh, for, uh, from Limerick Pagano Architects. I forget yet what year this was, but, you know, the, this option base repair code minimum for a twenty thousand square foot, uh, building, the construction cost range from four point seven million to five point three million. Even if you double that, that's at, at most ten million dollars. It's not the nineteen million dollars to get the building, uh, the necessary things that it, it needs, uh, uh, to, to stay, uh, relevant and in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Budagary. Quick follow-up, Mr. Conklin?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, I like to look at myself as like one of the library's biggest fans, uh, going there three, four, or five times a week with my kids, and it is a ghost town in there. There is plenty of room there. I can't see any need for expansion whatsoever. One other point, uh, there's a town in Wilton, Connecticut, that for when they have bond issues, they only do it once. We don't have to do the two hundred signature petition thing. We can write this into the bylaws if the select board and, and Christie are interested and, and our legal team, uh, consultants are interested in, uh, being done with this multiple never-ending, uh, bond issue thing, where everything else can be done, voted on again, but, but bond issues, one and done. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll note that the laws are quite different between Connecticut and Massachusetts, but that issue can be taken up at the appropriate time and place. Ms. Amiot, I know there were mentions made about number of numbers that you received, so would you like to offer a response to the question?
So I wanted to first, um, address the slide that Mr. Budagary showed that was pointing out that the library, uh, as he said, failed to complete work that was approved, uh, for carpet and windows. That work was intentionally not completed because when the, a short time after the funding was approved, we became aware that there would be construction grants happening, and we chose to hold off on that work and allow the state grant to help us pay for a portion of that work rather than pay for something that we would put into the building and then rip out a few years later. As I've said in my presentation and many times in the public, the library's always been a good steward of town funds, and we wouldn't do something wasteful like that. We wouldn't put windows in that were going to be smashed and taken out in a renovation. So we were holding on to those funds, hoping to apply them towards this project, and during COVID, when budgets got tight and the town was doing everything that we could to control costs on absolutely everything, the library trustees voted to return that money to the town and to bring forward an article that was completely clean of, and it was clear that the amount of money that we were asking for. Rather than taking old article money and trying to combine it with a new article and making it confusing, we wanted to help out, do our part, return those funds, and then bring this project forward to you all as one package. And I, I want to ask John to, um, address some of the numbers that Mr. Budagary was showing as well.
Thank you. Again, as brief and to the point as you can, while addressing questions.
Hi, John Lemieux, Vertex. I'm just going to use one example. It's, it's, it's important to not take specific items off of an estimate because that doesn't always tell the whole story. You have to review the estimate in total. You go through all of the trades, okay? And first, first and foremost, we had that estimate from Limerick Pagano, but then we hired a construction manager, Fontaine Brothers. That's the company that would actually build this building. So when they did the estimate, the price of the slate roof, roof repair went up to one seventy-seven. And then there's the rubber portion of the roof, that would be the new building. So in that number, isn't any sort of number for the remainder of the building, because remember, in this project, you're going to tear down the back, put up a new building and put on a new roof. So there needs to be some. So there needs to be some acknowledgement. So that 177 would just take care of the slate roof at the portion of the building that you are saving, nothing in the back. So you need to add something for that. On top of that are contingencies as well. Who's going to put the staging up? Okay? What about the electrician that has to disconnect everything that's on the roof, HVAC? All of those things are also in that estimate. So to look at just an item, is it at prevailing rates? That's the other thing that we have to do because we're in the Commonwealth. So if you take the 177 that's in that estimate and add the 304,000 for the rubber roof, that's 481,000. If you then add the 35% for the markups for the GC, for all those other contingencies because the project isn't designed yet, that's 650. And if you add the soft costs that were mentioned on that slide, that roofing's about 800,000. I challenge you to go get a roof on your own house right now, and it would be, it will be some fraction of that. So you have to look at all of the, all of the pieces and put them together. So you can look at individuals, but if you're going to do that, you have to go to the end of the estimate and look at all the markups that have also been put on that number as well. Because the sum of all, that stuff just doesn't exist in a vacuum. Those markups go to each and every line item for each and every trade. So I would, I would tell you that that roof, it's not, you know, he's right about the number. That first number is from the estimate, but there are a ton of markups that go on top of it. And there are other trades included in that estimate that you would need to add to it to have a fully functioning roof project.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to the next person in the gymnasium, please.
Mr. Moderator, we have a point of order being called.
Okay, can you give me that point?
Please come up to the microphone to present your point of order.
Name and address and point of order, please.
It's a request to move the question, but that needs to be done in the order of people in line, correct?
I was going to do it that, I've been circling around. So were they at the front of the line?
No.
Okay, that's not really a point of order. That's more something to do. So let's take the next person in line. And then Scout, there's a person...
Hold up, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. Hold on one second. I'm trying to understand what's going on here.
Scout, could you just bring a microphone down here to this row, please? While we're waiting. Yes, so I, so that's not really a point of order. I'd have to recognize the person.
Point, point of order? Nope.
Yes, I understand. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Moderator, please confirm how I think I explained point of order is that if something is going, not according to the rule of meeting, that can be called immediately. But moving the question is a wait in line request.
Yes, yeah, point of order is a procedural question, not making a motion. So why don't you let the next person go? The person at the front of the line.
Okay. So if you do have a point of order, can you turn on the mic and give your name and street address?
Diane McPherson, 32 Fisher Street. Point of order, keeping the comments to two to two and a half minutes. People are leaving because they had other commitments. So that's all.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Ms. McPherson. Mike, Scout down here. Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, 1 Lyman Street. I moved the question on Article 1.
Okay, Mr. Harrington has moved the question. All right. Okay.
No applause, please.
Yes, no applause, please. We have been at this, admittedly, a lot of it was presentations, but there have been discussions, pros and cons, for over an hour. I think people have heard what they want to hear, and we've handled this matter of questions. The motion to terminate debate has been accepted. It requires a two-thirds vote. So this motion is not on Article 1. This is to terminate debate. And to try to speed things along, I'm going to attempt to see if we can determine two-thirds without having to do a counted vote. So here, and it's, the motion terminate debate is not debatable, so we go straight to it. So will all those in both halls who are in favor of terminating debate, please raise their vote, their electronic device or their voting slip? Thank you. Okay. And so I think we clearly have more than two-thirds here in the auditorium from the gym. What's the report?
Definitely more than two-thirds.
More than two-thirds. Okay, thank you. Therefore, debate is terminated.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, what is your point? Name and address, please. I'm trying to get, I need to hear...
A request for the no votes is being requested.
Yep, okay. All right, good point. All right, with all those against terminating debate, sorry, please raise your voting slips. I see probably a dozen or two in here. What's the, what's the sense from the, from the gym?
I see fewer than a dozen, I believe.
Okay, so it is clearly a two-thirds vote, but thank you for the reminder for me to check both things. So thank you. So we have a two-thirds vote. The motion has passed. We now move to the question at hand. And I will remind, I'm going to remind people how this is going. What is your point? Name and address, please.
Oh, another point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Wait a second. One at a time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a point of order. I am the next person in line that was just butted in front of because there was a person who did not have a point of order, was allowed to speak in my place. And then you switched the microphone to the other auditorium. So I believe that you've just observed, you've taken away my right to express an opinion.
Okay, so wait, hang on. Did Ms. McPherson, she was not at the front of the line?
No, she was not.
Oh.
That is accurate.
Okay. I'll tell you what, then. Since I was doing it in cycling, so we, okay, sir, I will let you, I will let you speak. And then we will confirm our terminate debate. Because I had been cycling through the various things, and I came to Mr. Harrington because he was the next in me asking for non-vote. So, so the person who was at the front of the line in the gym, you may now speak, and I will void my agreement that the motion was in order. I took Mr. Harrington's motion out of order, will come back to his motion. So the person who was at the front of the line in the gym, name, name, street address, and make your remarks, please.
Joe Concedine, 10 Smith Street. First of all, thank you to Maureen Amiot for all the hard work on this proposal. Please don't think I am attacking you in any personal way, but I do take exception to this process. If we, as consumers, bought cars using this process, we would start by asking our family for a list of features. Then, after a long process, at the very end, the answer in the envelope would be, your Mercedes will cost $90,000. We would be told that the only alternative is to retrofit your car, your old car, to add new features, and not consider more cost-effective cars like a Ford, Chevy, or a Mazda like I drive. I urge you to explore a building, a more cost-effective library with plenty of parking on another site such as the former state hospital land on Lyman Street. Ms. Amiot, when you, when you presented this morning on Option A and B, you did not present the costs of Option C, which is a new site. I believe we could save as a town substantial money doing it that way. The primary users of the library are small children and older people, both of which use cars to get there. Even with the new library, I don't believe students from Gibbons or the high school will walk there after school. Kids those ages just don't use the library anymore, so we should not target them as a priority. I realize that a library downtown would be nice for downtown residents, but the costs of developing on that site ballooned out of control. Most significantly, it's a lot more expensive to retrofit an existing building than to build a new one. The survey needed to present options, not just questions to drive one option. It's like asking people what they like in a car without considering the price until the end of the purchasing process. We choose a BMW or a Mercedes every time if someone else will pay for it. Especially in these times of inflation at a 40-year-high, we need to consider costs, not just focus on the benefits and keep the costs in a secret number in the envelope until the end. Our families are making sacrifices. Companies are laying off large numbers. It's time for the government to trim some of their excess spending. Every town department will be telling us six months from now that inflation has driven their costs up substantially. For those concerned, a yes vote, I ask. Do we want to be in a position to lay off teachers, firemen, or police officers because we already spent the money on this library? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Brief, brief response, then we're going to go to Mr. Harrington since I, and thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Concedine. I apologize for taking you, not taking you in order as I expected.
Mary Johnson, 5 Sandra Pond Road. Thank you so much for your questions and comments. The reason, I just wanted to comment on why those options aren't being voted on today. The reason why that they're not is because back in 2016, all of those things were studied, were presented to the town, and the town voted then off of, based off of seven options to go forward with the downtown renovation and repair. All of those options were a part of the building program. It was deeply studied and explored, brought in front of you, who are our legislative body. And the town decided that this project that you're voting on today is what we wanted to go forward with. That's how the process works. So then we put it into the MBLC Commission grant, representing the wishes that the town voted in for the project they wanted in 2016. The funding part is the second piece of that, and that's why we're here today. It is extremely unfortunate, the timing in which it took us to get here, but as we've all mentioned before, that's out of our control. We're not voting on the options today for how to build it. You, as a legislative body, determined that in 2016. And we're taking those wishes forward as part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Harrington, I assume that now that I've corrected my mistake, skipping...
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Blaischewski?
There is a follow-up question from our questioner to that answer.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, my question is not why you don't have a proposal for what I'll call Option C. My question is why, when you showed your Option A, new library, Option B, retrofit or the repair of the old library, you did not present any cost information at all for an Option C, which is a library at a new site, without any estimate. So it's like you're trying to cloud our decision process by hiding Option C.
Ms. Johnson, quick response.
We were not the ones that presented that option. Our opposition had that in their presentation. So we're not trying to cloud. We've been very transparent. All of our information has always been on the library website. All of our library building committee meetings have been recorded and shared. It wasn't our option that was put out there.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Blaischewski.
Point of information?
Ms. Blaischewski, what was, what were you calling my attention to?
I have an individual being told they cannot vote because voting has started. Could you please clarify that anyone is...
Voting hasn't started yet. We had not started voting.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Spring, point of information.
And I think it fits within point of information. It's what the intent of a citizen's petition was and why it was enacted by the legislators? Would that count?
No, that's not a point of information right now. Hang on, hang on. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Borgen, before I went to Mr. Harrington, you had a point of order, so we'll address that, so I don't forget. Thank you. Mr. Borgen, can you just come down to the microphone quickly?
[inaudible]
Yeah, okay. Thank you for pointing that out. If you have a blue voting slip, you're supposed to be in the gym. We're not going to count blue voting slips here. You shouldn't have both a voting device and a blue slip. If you have a blue slip to vote, now would be a good time to start making your way to the gym. And if likewise, if you're in the gym and have an electronic voting device, now would be a good time to make your way in here. Because when we vote on this, that's how we're going to do it. Mr. Harrington, I'm assuming now that I've fixed all my mistakes, did you want to move the question again? He does. Okay. Mr. Harrington has, now that I've, now that I've fixed the procedural errors, and my apologies for that, Mr. Harrington has moved the question, the purpose of which to terminate debate. And I now have no longer cut anybody off in line. And so now, again, we're going to try to do this by issue. So all those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your electronic voting device or your voting slip. Thank you. All those opposed? As before, I see a vast majority with maybe a dozen that don't want to stop debate. Report from the gym, please.
Just a few in opposition.
Okay, so we have vastly more than two-thirds, but it's not unanimous. Therefore, this time for sure, debate is terminated. Thank you. All right. At this point, we're going to move to vote. And if we go back to, I know it seemed like a long time ago, I am at this point going to divide the meetings as, as the rule that was approved earlier. So once voting, I just can tell you, we're going to, so if anybody has a blue voting slip right now, you must go to the gymnasium. And if you're in the gymnasium, and if you have an electronic voting device, you must come to the auditorium. And you cannot have both. You can only vote once, and you can only vote for yourself. If anybody sees anything else going on, let me know.
Mr. Moderator, point, point of order?
Yes, what's your point?
Is this a two-thirds vote?
I'm going to point, yes, this is a two-thirds vote, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anyway, this is going to take some time. We have over 1,300 people here, and I think we have about 600 or 800 here, and we had a bunch of the thing. When I, typically, when we do electronic voting, we vote for 15 seconds. But I'm going to leave voting in here open until everybody in the gym has cast their ballot, and we're not going to look at or get any numbers until I declare voting has been ended. And that will end debate for both this room and the other room. At that point, I will tell the electronic voting people to hold on to their numbers until we've counted the ballots in the other room. I also want to remind you, for those who are interested in the library project, Article 2 is also related, so I know everybody's got things to do, but we have to move on to Article 2 once that's done. So at this point, I'm going to declare that voting has opened. So I've divided the meeting. You need, I'll give you a second if you need to to get in the room. Voting has started. It requires a two-thirds vote. Pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Ms. Rissmoller's motion, which is up on the screen here. Pressing 2 is a vote against. So yes is 1, 2 is no. If you accidentally press the wrong button, until that green light goes off, you can change your vote. At this point, I would like to ask the tellers who I appointed earlier to make their vote, bring their device with them, make sure it's registered, and come in. And I am going to go with the tellers into the gym, and we're going to supervise voting in there by ballot. Thank you, I'll be back. Oh, okay. Is it all set now? Why don't, why don't we both go in there?
We are going to do secret balloting in here. Mr. Arnold is going to come in to help facilitate that. If anyone needs any assistance getting up to the table where voting will take place, please raise your hand. We can accommodate that. But this will be a paper, secret ballot to preserve the anonymity, just like the electronic Please do not get up to vote until Mr. Arnold comes in to facilitate the process.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, everyone. Was there a third table?
Three tables.
Oh, there's three tables. So the way this is going to work, first, I'm going to swear in the tellers. So are the tellers here? I appointed them earlier. Where are the tellers?
They're here.
Okay, the tellers have been sworn in to faithfully and accurately report the votes. We have three tables, we're going to have three lines. I know that there were two colored slips here. In order to vote, you're going to have to go to the end, you're going to have to go to the end of a table where it starts. The starting point is at the far end. You are going to come to the table, write yes if you are in favor of the main motion, and write no on your slip. Then you will drop the slip in the box. Then you will be given a new color if there's another vote. So, and then, at this point, once you have cast your vote, please move back, so we can do that. All right, as I said, voting has begun. So there can be three lines. Find the closest line. Well, they got, I would rather the slips be handed out. Hang, hang on, can you, can you stop the voting for just a second? We need somebody to hand out the new slips as they give one.
Please stop voting. Moderator has requested that we pause voting.
Once you vote, somebody from the voting staff will give you a different colored voting slip for your next vote. So don't vote until somebody's ready to give you a slip.
I think Debbie went together.
Okay, so hang on just a second. So remember, yes is in favor of the motion to, sorry, no is against the motion. Can we please just have people at one end of the table?
Please try to proceed past the table in one direction only, starting on the right side, proceeding to the left to drop the vote in the box.
Excuse me, for those that are in the auditorium, what we're hearing is the information from the gym. So folks are still, the green light's still on. Those with electronic voting are still allowed to vote in here. As I indicated, the electronic voting will stay open for the duration of the voting here in the gym. Yes, right now, the yellow cards are for the next vote. Once you hand in a blue or a pink ballot, get a yellow one for the next time from your All right, if anyone has been told to vote, and then the yellow slips are going to be handed out, that's not correct. Once you put your ballot in the box, go to an election staff... Once you put your ballot in the box, go to an election staff person here at the front of the room and get a yellow ballot. Will be used next time. And just a reminder, once you voted, get your next replacement voting slip. It will be a different color. And then, please move back to your seat or toward the back of the room, so we know when everyone's voted. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I'm back here in the gym. I've been told that for system stability reasons, it would be good for us to not risk the-- all the activity for the electronic voting system. Stays open for the time it's going to take it. We have a lot of votes recorded, but I think-- can I just ask for consensus? Has everyone here with electronic voting device placed their vote and comfortable with what their vote is? I'm not going to look at the results now, but we're thinking of actually just letting the system go into a steady state, just to make sure it doesn't crash, and we have to reboot and do the whole thing over. Can I have unanimous consent that everybody in here with their electronic voting device feels their vote has been accurately placed and that they are okay with me terminating-- ending voting here in the auditorium? Thank you. All right. Anyone opposed to that? All right. In that case, I will give a countdown of five seconds. At that point, voting in the auditorium only will be closed. Five, four, three, two, one. In the auditorium, voting has ended. Thank you. We'll get-- I'm not going to look at the numbers until I have both rooms. We'll report back as soon as we can. Thank you. Also, I do want to remind people, Article 2 is also related to the library, and so we're going to have a vote on that. And if Article-- it will need to be voted on. So don't think that just because this vote's done, that it's in your best interest to leave. You can decide when to come and go, but Article 2 will need to be acted upon and will need to be voted on as soon as we get the count done. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that everyone who had a blue, was it? Blue and green slips have voted. Is there anyone here who has not cast their vote on Article One? Seeing none, I declare that voting on Article One has closed. At this point, the tellers are going to begin counting. We closed the vote in the auditorium already, but I don't know the results there. So will the tellers please come to the middle table?
Everyone who has voted in the gym, if you are staying for the rest of the proceedings and you don't have a yellow or pink or not blue, not green slip, please come up to the front to make sure you get one.
And also, I do want to mention that for the case it wasn't clear, I mentioned it in the other room, but it wasn't clear. In order for the library project as presented to proceed cleanly, Article Two is just as important as Article One. Article One was the money. Article Two is zoning, the building envelope. So that's why they're separate articles and they will be voted on separately. As soon as we announce the vote for Article One, we're immediately going to go to Article Two. Article Two also requires a two-thirds vote. How about now? All right, thank you. I just wanted to let you know they have started to count the votes in the gym. So we have three sets of two people counting the ballots, so it shouldn't take too, too long now. I have not, voting is closed in here, voting is closed in the gym. Once I get the numbers from the gym, I'll bring them back in here. I will look at the numbers for electronic voting, we'll add them up and we'll see what the results are. So thanks for your patience. I think you couldn't hear me because to keep the clutter down. Just so people know, I think it was made clear by, by me and others. For Article One project to proceed cleanly with the, it needs the Article Two zoning. Article Two will be coming up as soon as I announce the vote. It also needs a two-thirds vote. And it has to do with the zoning, the building envelope for the library project. So the funding was in Article One. The zoning, so they can actually have the proper zoning, is Article Two. The proponents want both to pass. The people against want both to fail. May the best vote win. Thank you. All right. We have received a count from the gymnasium that the head teller has informed me was, they were sworn to make it accurate. We have the electronic voting that's been reviewed by the town clerk and myself. The results of the vote are in favor, 529 opposed, 715, the motion fails. We now turn our, we now turn our attention to Article Two. Article Two, Ms. Riss-Muller.
Julia Riss-Muller, 12 West Street. I move to pass over this article.
Okay. If you need to leave, can you please be quiet? We have four more articles and I'm hoping they can go quickly. Ms. Riss-Muller, because Article One failed, has moved to pass over the article, the result of which would be to take no action. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition or in favor of Ms. Riss-Muller's motion? Because it's a motion to pass over, there is no need for a planning board report, though I will note in the record that the planning board was ready, willing, and able to make a report. Finance committee, I assume, no comments? Select board, no comments? All right. If you're ready in the gym, I'm going to ask people to, in the, in the auditorium, please raise your electronic voting device if you are in favor of Ms. Riss-Muller's motion to pass over. All those in favor, the motion to pass over, which is essentially to take no action. Okay? All, it's a clear majority in here. All those opposed? I see very few, if any, so...
We have one in opposition in the gym that I can see.
Okay. So it is a clear majority in both rooms. The motion to pass over carries, the motion is passed over. We now move to, turn our attention to Article Three. An amendment to the acquisition of Zero Ruggles Street off Ruggles Street, article that we dealt with in October. Again, if you have to leave, can you please leave as quietly as you can? And again, thank you for coming and participating. I really wish you would stay, but thank you for coming. Mr. Johnson?
Ian Johnson, Nine Berdus Adams Way. Bear with me for the motion here. I move that town amend the vote taken under Article 18 of the October 17th, 2022, special town meeting, which authorized the select board to acquire property located off Ruggles Street, containing 15.42 acres, more or less, and describe in a deed recorded with the Worcester South District of deeds in Book 46027, page 83. And A, authorize the select board to acquire the portions of said property shown as parcel A and parcel B on a plan entitled Plan of Land Zero Ruggles Street and Breen Road, Westborough, Mass., in parentheses, Worcester South, dated October 4th, 2022, on file with the town clerk for conservation and passive recreation purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, and subject to the provisions of Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. With the remaining parcel C, as shown in the foregoing plan, to be acquired by the town for conservation, passive recreation, parking, utility, and general municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the select board. And B, authorize the select board, the conservation, and/or their designee to apply for, accept, and expend any funds that may be provided by the Commonwealth or other public or private sources to defray all or a portion of said costs of acquisition, including but not limited to grants and/or reimbursement from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under General Law, Chapter 132A, Section 11, the so-called land grants, and/or any other federal, state, any other federal, state, or other grants or reimbursement programs in any way connected with the scope of this acquisition. And to enter into any and all agreements and execute on behalf of the town, any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate said acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Remarks?
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me with that motion. So anyways, this article is asking for an amendment to the article approved at the October Town Meeting for the appropriation of funds and acquisition of the property located at Zero Ruggles, off Ruggles, off of Breen Road. Kind of in the middle section, yep, shaded here. Going back a slide, Mark, if you can. At the October Special Town Meeting, the article conveyed parcels A and C to the select board. Parcel A is a small one. If someone has a pointer, they could...
It's just above the straight line, the small straight line, yeah.
Parcel A at the top.
Up there, yeah.
Yeah, parcel A there. Thank you, Mark. And parcel C at the bottom of the screen. Those were conveyed to the select board. And parcel B, the big section in the middle, was conveyed to the Conservation Commission. As we talked about that meeting, the town had been awarded a grant from the state for purchase of the land. However, originally, the town had been informed that any division of the property would make the town ineligible for the grant. However, after our October Town Meeting vote, the town was informed by the state that if parcel A, the small parcel at the top, right on Breen Road, that if Parcel A, the small parcel at the top, right on Breen Road, if that was conveyed to the Conservation Commission, the grant could be amended to offset some of the costs associated with this acquisition. So basically, what we're asking with this motion is the change from the previous voted article, that this approval of this article now would convey that Parcel A to the Conservation Commission, and that will allow the town to attain a grant in the amount of $61,630 for the purchase of the property, as well as some associated costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. As you can see, the Finance Committee and the Select Board both unanimously recommended to approve this. Any questions? Person at the back, please. Name, name and street address, and question or comment? I think it has a slider, perhaps? Steve, the, okay, now, name and street address, please.
David Hubbard, five Breen Road. Question, question for the team. Have we learned anything about any required access that is to be provided? Should this, to the property that's being acquired from the state?
So the reason that Article, or sorry, Parcel A needs to convey to the Conservation Commission is because there needs to be direct access. And that's, so the access would be from Breen Road. The requirement under the grant is to have parking and/or a trailhead. And so that needs to be completed by the end of, by June of 2023. I had sent an email to Mr. Hubbard, just letting him know that. Also, we're talking to the state about any existing access and whether or not that would meet the requirement. But, but we don't know. So we, there is a likelihood that there would need to be at least a trailhead at that Breen Road location.
Follow-up?
Yes, is, obviously, that's not the only access point that's possible, is Parcel C being considered as well as a potential access for the public? Because it would be far less impactful to the neighborhood and via Butters, should it be on the other end of the property?
Thank you. Follow-up, no, Ms. Williams?
So we can look at different alternatives. The Parcel C is not conveyed to the Conservation Commission. And so Parcel C is under the control of the Select Board. Parcel A was previously under control of the Select Board or is currently, I guess, under the October Town Meeting vote, and that was not meeting the requirements of the grant. So we're talking to the state about different access points and how we might be able to achieve what we need to in order to be reimbursed under the grant. But I, but it is possible and likely that there would have to be some sort of trailhead or parking at that Parcel A.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Wieszkiewicz.
We have a request from the gym to place the parcel map back up on the screen, if possible.
The parcel map is on the screen now. Is that the one you wanted to see? Or, or do you want to see the?
It was not on the screen here when I asked. The, the map with the ABC labels.
Oh, okay. Yeah, can you, yeah. Okay, yes, so Parcel A, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there another follow-up, Mr. Hubbard, briefly?
Yes, I was just going to ask if there was an estimate that had been done regarding the cost of creating that access area. Should Parcel A become that, what is the estimate for preparing it to, because I'm curious, in light of the fact that we're getting $60,000 towards it, I'm wondering what the cost is going to be to the town in order to create that, that access?
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
So the former Conservation Director did put something in the capital plan generated by the last vote, which was, we were talking about parking. I believe the request was for $10,000. However, a trailhead could just be signage. So it's, I see the Chair of the Conservation Commission here, and I know he's involved in that, so he might have a better estimate than I do.
You all set, Mr. Hubbard? Hang on. Okay.
Yeah, Andrew Kenningsburg, three Smith Street, Conservation Commission. Kristi asked me to look into this a little bit more. I am in contact with WCLT. They're the head of the Stewardship Committee. Want to look at, there's supposedly an existing trail from the end of Breen Street there, according to a GPS map that was put together by WCLT. I'm going to be going out there at some point with the head of the Stewardship Committee to see if we can find that trail, if it has to just be cleared up. The Stewardship Committee probably can work to improve the trail and mark it. We work with WCLT all the time on trail maintenance. And basically, what we would have to do at that point, if we had trail access from Breen Street, is to just put up a sign, the way we did from the trail access to directly to the depraved property off of Eli Whitney. The other thing I want to explore with the state, I have not had time to do it yet, is to contact them and find out if any of the trails that, there are two trails, what they call dog-like trails, that sort of go to nowhere, but as well as the loop down to Breen Street, if they would define direct access as access from the existing trails off of the trails from the, from the depraved property. We would also probably have to look at, at some point, putting some kind of loop trail on Zero Ruggles to sort of have a complete access to that property. But that's in the future. So the primary thing is either having a direct trail access from Breen Street or checking with the state to see if existing trails from the depraved property that go onto Zero Ruggles would be sufficient to define direct access. So I'm for giving you that information now. Those are questions that need to be answered before next, you know, answered and put in place before next June. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kenningsburg. Hang on, hang, wait, wait, wait. Only I recognize the speaker. If that person wants to ask a question, they can get in line, because I've got somebody waiting to speak. So if you have a question about that, feel free to, to tell me that you want to speak, and we'll get there. But if you're done, are you done, Mr. Kenningsburg?
Yes.
Okay.
I was trying to answer Mr. Hubbard's question.
I thought somebody was talking to you, asking another question. Is that not the noise I heard?
Well, they, it was also, he had a follow-up question about how much it would cost to the town, and if we could use trail access. It's just a matter of putting up a sign.
Oh, okay. If that was the question, you've summarized it. And if it was Mr. Hubbard, that was okay. I couldn't tell who was speaking. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anyone in the gym wish to speak on this matter?
Yes, we have one.
Okay. Name and street address, please?
Kathy Wilford, five Mary Lou Circle. My question to the selectmen and to the town manager is why aren't we turning this all over to Conservation? Parcel C included.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yep, Mark, can you go to the third picture here? Yeah, if you look at this picture, and we talked about this last Town Meeting, if you look at the bottom of the screen, to the direct right, you can see the water tower for the town. The reason, in this, so this property of Butts that, that Parcel C is there for, under the Board of Selectmen, because right now, to try to do work around that water tower, or if we needed to expand that water tank in the future, as you can see right here, we're, we're right on the property line. So that piece going to the town was really for protection for future use for water at that spot. That is, that's the top of the hill. But that's why that one, we want to stay under the control of the Select Board.
Okay, thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Ms. Wilford. Any other questions from the gym?
No, there are not.
Mr. Hubbard, do you have another follow-up?
Yes, just a quick follow-up. I'm curious if, I know we talked about creating access, or you mentioned that creating access from Parcel C wouldn't be under the Conservation Commission's determination. Should this go forward? It would be under the selectmen's, because that's the selectmen, selectmen control that space. Is there any reason why they would not support creating a trailhead from there as a preference, seeing as the spirit of preserving this land is not to clear it, but to keep it open? One would think if you were putting space aside for, with the control of the selectmen, that you could then leave the other space undisturbed.
Ms. Williams? Sorry, didn't see that.
The, it's not, the need for access is part of the acceptance of the grant. So the need for direct access is part of the acceptance of the grant. And as I mentioned, under the previous vote of Town Meeting, that Parcel A was under the care and control of the Select Board, and that did not meet the terms of the grant. So while we can discuss providing access through Parcel C in addition, in terms of meeting the terms of the grant, our understanding is that we need to have that direct access, which would likely come from Breen Road. We are, as Andy and I had mentioned, we're trying to work with the state to understand if any of the existing trails that connect there would meet the terms of the grant. But, but our understanding at this point is, is that it would need to be that direct access as a trailhead or, and/or parking lot, is how they describe it.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised for comment here. Any comment in the gym?
No other questions in the gym.
Okay, in that, in that case, our action comes on Mr. Johnson's lengthy motion, which is to amend a vote taken at the October 17th, 2022 Special Town Meeting, which Mr. Johnson read. And we'll get up on the screen, just to save time. We're gonna, this just requires a majority vote. Will all those in favor of Mr. Johnson's motion please raise their electronic voting device or their voting slip? Thank you. All the, it's a clear majority in here. What's the report from the, from the gym?
I'd like to see the opposed.
Okay, opposed? Opposed in this room, too?
We have a majority vote here.
Okay, so it's a, it's a clearly a majority. There's only a handful against here. So, so therefore, a majority in both rooms. Therefore, no need to account it as a majority vote. The motion carries. Thank you. We now turn our attention to Article Four, dealing with fiscal year 2023 elections budget amendment. Mr. Edinburgh? Oh, let's wait for the mic to get on, please. Is there a switch, or?
Alan Edinburgh, eight Nash Street. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $30,000 for the purpose stated in the article as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Edinburgh. Comments?
Yes, thank you. The fiscal year 2023 budget included $20,000 for voting devices at Town Meeting. The cost of voting devices at the October Fall Special Town Meeting exceeded this amount. This article will fund the cost of voting devices for the annual Town Meeting in March 2023. The voting devices being used at this meeting today were funded through the Advisory Finance Committee Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Edinburgh. Any comments here in the auditor? Questions, comments? Yes. Can you get to, it might be quicker, it might be quicker to get to the microphone, if you can. Thank you.
Gary Kessler, 20 Ruggles Street. I'd like clarification. Is the sum of $30,000 the total expenditure for the year? Or is that in addition to the monies that have already been allocated?
It's in addition.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the gym?
No.
Okay. Mr. Conklin?
Lloyd Conklin, eight Water Street. How much did the voting devices cost today?
Does anybody remember? We think it was about $12,000.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything from the gym? Nothing from the gym?
Nothing.
Okay. In that case, our action comes on Mr. Edinburgh's motion. I will just point out that the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen recommend approving. All those in favor, please raise your voting devices or your voting slip, depending on which room you're in. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? I see a handful in opposition, but a clear majority here. Report from the gym?
I see fewer than 10 in opposition.
Okay, and about how many people are there? I mean, is, is, that's less than half, right?
Yes, we still have more than 20 people in the gym, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so it's a clear majority in both, both spaces. Therefore, the motion carries. Thank you. We now turn our attention to Article Five, dealing with the opioid settlement fund. Mr. Keough?
Hello. Still on? Sean Keough, five Yorkshire Circle. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $224,199.85 for the purpose stated in the article as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Remarks?
Yes, so this is the amount that we have received so far in the opioid litigation settlement. This money must be spent as prescribed in the settlement agreements, and this article would appropriate this money to be spent as required in those agreements. Under state guidelines developed by, for expenditure of these funds developed by municipalities, they should incorporate community input, address service disparities to increase access and equity in treatment and services for OUD, prevention and harm reduction relating to opiates, and leverage existing state, city, town, and community opioid use disorder, mental health disorder, and behavioral health disorder programming and services. Your vote here is required for us to be able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Comments from the auditorium? Questions, comments? I see nothing. Yes, Mr. Bootleary?
Steve Bootleary, nine Thomas Newton Drive. Would the, would this be considered seed money for a longer-term program? I guess that's to the board or toward the town manager.
All right, thank you. Ms. Williams, any remarks?
It could. The, currently, right now, we received this money, and then we have to go through prescriptive process to spend it. But some of the things, the state is actually really encouraging you to work with regionally to create programs. And so it could develop into a longer-term program, but...
Which would put more of a tax burden on the town?
No. Currently, we're just talking about using the opioid funds.
Right, but in the future, my, I, I personally prefer the money to go towards prevention of drugs coming into the country and prevention of excess prescribing of opioids, and rather than trying to fix the problem after it's occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Bootleary. Any comments from the gymnasium?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Name and street address, please?
Nathan Walsh, three Matthew Drive. Right now, the funds are in the general fund, which means it needs Town Meeting approval in order to spend them, which means we get a say as to what these funds are spent on. Is it my understanding that once the town were to move this out of free cash and put it into some other program, that some other group is going to have control and say over how those funds are exactly spent? Or is it still going to require things to come back to Town Meeting to decide on exactly what program that funds gets spent on?
Ms. Williams?
So the, the money does come, and it goes into the general fund. At the end of the year, it would close out to free cash. It wouldn't require any additional approvals at Town Meeting. Your approval of this article today would allow us to spend it under the prescriptive guidelines of the settlement agreements.
You all set, Mr. Walsh?
Yes, he's all set. We do, we do have additional questions in the gym.
Okay. Next person from the gym, please. Name and street address.
Terry Gavin, five Duane Drive. Is there a timeline that has to be spent? Is it one year? Is it five years?
Ms. Williams?
There's no, there's no timeline. The, the town is required to submit annual reports beginning in August of '23.
And when it goes out of free cash, does that mean like a certain department will have this money? Or is that just the town manager?
The money will be in the article with access for use as described in the article that's approved. We'll be working... We'll be working with the Board of Health, Youth and Family Services, and Public Safety to determine how we move forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the gym?
We're all set.
Anyone here in the auditorium? I see no other hands, so our action comes on Mr. Keough's motion to move, essentially to transfer from free cash, the sum he read for the purposes in the article. Please raise your, for all those in favor, please raise your electronic voting devices or your voting slip. Thank you. All those opposed? I see none opposing here. Report from the gymnasium, please.
Just a handful in opposition, and we have a majority, yes.
Okay, so therefore, it is a clear majority. The motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Ian Johnson, nine Burdice Adams Way. I move that we dissolve the December 10, 2022 special town meeting.
Okay, Mr. Johnson has moved that we dissolve the special town meeting, which is to end it since we've completed the warrant. I see no discussion. All those in favor, please raise their electronic voting devices. All right, all those opposed? All right, I declare, report from the gym?
We're good.
We're good. Okay, I declare the special town meeting of December 10, 2022 has been dissolved. Thank you all so much for taking time out of a busy Saturday and for exercising your right to be a citizen legislator. See you next time. Thank you for all your work and for keeping it together. I really appreciate it. And thanks to everyone who set up the rooms on pretty difficult circumstances. The meeting is ended. Thank you. I also just want to mention, it's quite a send-off we've given our outgoing town clerk, Wendy Nichol, who's decided not to run for reelection. We thought October was it, but hopefully, this is it. So thank you. Quite a way to end it off. One of the biggest town meetings we've had since she's been town clerk and since I've been moderator. Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your day.